As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. Starting tonight, the public may have live stream video of city council work sessions and regular meetings. Instructions for accessing the meetings can be found on the city's website at www.c i.stanton.v a.us backslash council. On April 21st, 2021, I received a request from Councilor Dole to participate remotely in the April 22nd, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary disability medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow Councilor Dole to remotely participate in the April 22nd, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary disability slash medical condition.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, my second.
Councilmember Meade is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Meade.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Councilor Dole, please state the remote location from which you are participating.
At 1,003 East Beverly Street, Stanton, Virginia.
Thank you. Can everyone on the city council and everyone in the audience hear Counselor Dole?
Yes.
All right, great. All right, well, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the work session and regular meeting agenda as proposed.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Claffey. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
All right, so we have a second by Councilmember Darby. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks.
Uh, Councilmember Meade.
I am disappointed, I have to say, that not even one council member who voted to repeal the uncodified ordinance would offer a motion to reconsider the repeal. A motion for reconsideration must be made by a counselor on the prevailing side of the vote. Only Mayor Oaks, Vice Mayor Robertson, Mr. Claffey, or Ms. Darby can bring the matter up for reconsideration. To do so would signal to the many citizens who have protested and objected to this denial of their right to address council that you are and 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 indicate to them that you are listening. Each of the council members who voted to end phone comments ran on a platform of wanting citizens' voices to be heard. And I will show you this from their campaign materials last year. We want your voice to be heard, no matter your personal politics. And I will also share this, another portion of their campaign literature. We need to elect the candidates who will not silence citizens' voices when motions for public comment are made at council meetings. I am disappointed, as I said. It's easy to make promises when you're running for election. It's harder to keep them.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Meade.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, before we go on any further, I just wanted to remind everyone to please wear your mask when you're not only in the chambers but throughout City Hall. We do have a hand sanitizer at the entrance of the chambers as well as hand sanitizing wipes at the podium. And please be mindful of social distancing. And to the council members, if you can please recognize the mayor, the mayor will recognize you in order for you to be able to speak with your questions and comments. All right, the next item is item two on the work session agenda and item A on the regular meeting agenda. It's the FY 2022 budget work session. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. This item is on the work session agenda and then the consideration of the budget ordinance is on the regular meeting agenda for your consideration this evening and the adoption of the FY 2022 budget. We've, we have three decision points to review with you this evening. One is the real estate tax rate. The second is the, we just want to make sure that there's absolute clarity on the issue of the recycling program and how to handle that. And then finally, as I communicated to you yesterday, we'd like to have a discussion with you about the timing and the amount of the employee salary increase. So Mr. Treer has a presentation to share with you and then we'll wrap up with coming to some finality on these three issues. And at that point, that will give Mr. Treer what he needs to depart this work session and pull together documentation for your final consideration during the regular meeting. So we need, we would like to come out of this 50-minute maximum discussion with direction on those three issues so that we can, before your regular meeting, pull together the materials that we need for you all to take action during the regular meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Treer.
Welcome, Mr. Treer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we're here for a final review of the FY 2022 proposed budget before consideration occurs later this evening. The proposed FY 2022 budget equals 131.4 million and is 11.4 and 17.1 million above FY 2020 and 2021 respectively. When we finished the work session last week, we seemed to have a consensus on providing the schools an additional $220,000. I can assure you, this was well received by the schools. You also wanted time to consider tax rate of 95, 93, and 92 cents per $100 of assessed value. And finally, you needed more time to consider curbside versus centralized recycling. On slides three and four, we review some of the sections incorporated into the ordinance that you will be voting on this evening. Section one quantifies the amount to the entire FY 2022 budget for city schools and proprietary funds. In the proposed budget, it equals 131,353,978. Obviously, this could change depending on council's vote. Section two provides for a 75% appropriation of the approved budget amount with a subsequent appropriation to be brought before council no later than February 2022. This is being done to provide council with flexibility to adjust spending as it sees fit as the city continues to feel the effects of the pandemic. Slide three establishes a tax rate of X dollars per $100 of assessed value. Section four establishes personal property machinery and tools tax at $2.90 and $1.24 per $100 of assessed value respectively. These taxes remain unchanged. Sections five and section six provide for service charges to be levied on certain taxes and properties to include Mary Baldwin and the Potomac Conference Center for Police and Fire Protection. The rate equals 19 cents per $100 of assessed value and 48 cents per $100 of assessed value for faculty and staff housing of an educational institute. Section nine establishes the annual salary for council. This has not changed. Section 10 provides flexibility for the city manager to reallocate fund appropriations between lines during the course of the year or withhold expenditures deemed to be in the best interest of the city. Under this, council still retains the right to disperse funds as they deem appropriate. Sections 11 and 12 states that any ordinance in conflict with this ordinance is repealed to only the extent that such conflict exists. Finally, any part of this ordinance found to be invalid by a competent authority does not invalidate the remaining aspects of this ordinance. Slide five breaks out the FY 2022 proposed budget versus the appropriation of 75%. The proposed budget equals 131.4 million and a 75% appropriation will equal 98.5 for city schools and proprietary funds. Again, supplemental appropriation recommendations will occur no later than February 2022. On slide six, we review aspects of the FY 2022 proposed budget as it was presented. Currently, proposed budget has 93 cents per $100 of assessed value. Downtown service tax remains unchanged at 15 cents per $100 of assessed value. Personal property tax remains unchanged at $2.90 for $100 of assessed value. Machinery and tools remain unchanged at $1.24 per $100 of assessed value. On slide seven, proprietary funds, water rates proposed remain unchanged. Sewer rates are proposed remain unchanged. Refuge rates are proposed remain unchanged under centralized recycling. Rates are proposed to increase by 15% with curbside collection of recycling. Stormwater fees are proposed remain unchanged and parking fees are proposed remain unchanged. On slide eight, we have a high-level review of the school board adopted budget. The FY 2022 budget equals 40.5 billion, has a proposed 5% to 7% salary increase, has 19 new positions. Slide nine is just a summary of what we've already discussed. The proposed budget is 131.4 million. Staff, staff will seek guidance at the end of this presentation for the tax rate and centralized recycling. Appropriation of 75% will equal 98.5 million. Again, we will come back in February. 75% appropriation allows for contractual obligations, which are often paid in full at the beginning of the year to be covered, as well as other line items funded for the first seven months of the fiscal year. And again, staff will come back assuming sufficient funds to meet budget requirements with the additional appropriation recommendation in February. On slide 10, we have scheduled out multiple scenarios. I know this is a busy slide, but it, but it is relatively straightforward. On the left-hand side, under the green headings, we have the three tax scenarios of 95, 93, and 92 cents per $100 of assessed value and centralized recycling. On the right-hand side, under the orange heading, we have the three scenarios in curbside pickup. Total budgets range from 132.2 with a 95 cent tax rate in curbside pickup to 131 million with a 92 cent tax rate in centralized collection. Slide 11. Slide 11 is where we're going to spend our time. On slide 11, we look at how the city might address the FY 2022 budget under the three scenarios discussed last week. But before we begin, we do need to update you on the Middle River Regional Jail expenses. As we're all aware, the expenses at the Middle River Regional jails have driven much of the increase in mandated costs the city has had to absorb since our last assessment. And these expenses has helped drive the higher tax rates being considered this evening. This week, we learned that approximately 200 state inmates were transferred into state facilities from the Middle River Regional Jail. This means in all probability, we can begin FY 2022 without having to pay for inmates to be housed in other regional jails. Because of this transfer is our belief that we will pick up budget capacity at the Middle River Regional Jail in FY 2022. Additional budget capacity at the jail means savings can be used to offset potential CIP reserve repayments the localities will be responsible for over the next three years. Currently, the jail budget is balanced by using $500,000 in CIP reserves and $200,000 in technology reserves, which will have to be paid back in the next three years unless the fund balances is sufficient to offset the repayments. Stand share would equal 140,000. Savings could also be used to cover a potential emergency generator replacement at the jail, which does not appear in the capital budget or regular budget. This generator could run as high as $600,000 if the generator needs to be replaced. Stand share would be approximately 120,000. But all this means is because of the inmate transfer, we feel that we can reduce the defensive budget provisions that we put in the Middle River Regional Jail line to cover the CIP liabilities. This will factor into the three scenarios we're about to review. Again, we were asked to consider three scenarios last week. Taxes at 95 cent, 93 cent, and 92 cents per $100 of assessed value. At 95 cents per $100 of assessed value, we pick up additional 431,000. We will reduce the juvenile detention cost by 211,000 and transfer 220,000 to the schools to meet them halfway to cover their gap. We transfer an additional $215,000 under this scenario to the schools or 50% of the 431,000 in increased revenues. We adjust salaries to 3% with an effective date of July 1st. This increase, this, this increased cost will be $368,000 in the general fund. Additional adjustments include $160,000 reduction for the Middle River Regional Jail line, and this too affects the general fund, and there will be no contingency. At 93 cents per $100 of assessed value, we have no additional revenue. Again, we reduce the juvenile detention by 211 and transfer 220 to the schools to meet them halfway. We move our, we move a proposed 3% wage increase back to October 1st. This increased cost will be approximately $230,000 for the general fund. Additional adjustments, again, 160 for the Middle River Regional Jail line and a negative contingency of $79,000. And finally, at 92 cents for $100 of assessed value, we will lose $215,000 in revenue. We're still going to cover the current, the schools. Salary adjustments of 3% are moved to January 1st, 2020. It adds an additional $92,000. Additional adjustments in Middle River Regional Jail, 160, and we'll have a negative contingency of $156,000. I am prepared to manage a budget with any one of these three scenarios.
Hey, are there any questions for Mr. Treer?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilmember Dole.
I, I'm in favor of the 93 cent tax rate. I would also like to have council members consider that scenario with the addition of continuing curbside recycling for a year. And in that, this next fiscal year, we would ensure that with our new communications manager on board, that we would provide education for citizens so that they're, they know exactly what and how to recycle. And we can also have, perhaps have a survey, asking our citizens, what, what are the pros and cons that they see? And we can also monitor the recycling price, the market, because prices are starting to increase. And as we see opportunities here in the United States for reusing plastics particularly, but other items, there may be opportunities. And, and I see this as a way to not lose the momentum and that, that we have over a generation of curbside recycling. And, and as well, a lot of people look at curbside recycling as a community effort and, and a quality of life issue. And I think we should give it some more study and thought over the next year. And to, and to not increase the fees this year, I propose that, that 93 cent scenario, the, the 141,000 that would take to continue curbside recycling would be added to the negative contingency to make that 220,000.
All right, are there any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
You know, last week when we were given these numbers, were we not expecting a negative contingency of over 200,000?
Yeah, with the reduced jail line, that's the difference maker. But 160,000.
So you went to 156.
Yep.
You were comfortable at 200 and how much, 216,000 last week?
Yeah, 215 is what we talked about. Yes, sir.
A lot of change in this week. I mean, we've never really had a, a chance to examine this so far. I mean, I know we go into a budget procedure way back in January and we're looking at this. And on the, at the 23rd hour, a new report appears on my desk, which changes the numbers. And I'm, I'm concerned because I haven't had a chance to, to fully wrap my hands around. Why, why was it changed 24 hours before we had to come up with this? And, and it's, it's frustrating. And you told us last week that a negative contingency of 215,000 was handable?
Yes, we can absorb that.
Today, it looks like I'm asked to back out a, a city salary adjustment in order to do this, and, and I'm not.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't understand where this came from at the, the 52nd week of the year. I mean, have, give me some explanation why we changed this in the last three days.
This is Carolyn Dole. Just for clarification, this scenario is not backing out of the salary adjustment. It's increasing it from 2% to 3% and having it start earlier. It was going to start in January and now it would start in October. So it's good news for our city employees and I, I certainly support that totally because they didn't get a bonus. They have worked hard through the pandemic. And if, if we were fortunate enough to have a reduction at Middle River that will help to make this happen, it's just good news that nobody knew was going to happen till it did.
I agree 100%. I mean, I'm not contesting that at all, but when you look at the 93 cent versus the 92 cents, it looks like you're asking them to change the salary increase from October 1st to January 1st. And I wasn't aware of this until I read this report today.
Mr. Claffey, I may be able, let, let me try to help you. The, the budget as it was originally proposed provided for a 2% increase.
Gotcha.
As of, as of January 1st, as of January 1st.
Right.
And it, there were a couple of things that happened. One is the, the shift in the jail that Mr. Treer reported to you. The, the other is that we became aware of what's going on in terms of compensation moves, not only in the immediate region, but also statewide. And so we, we looked at the proposed adjustment to the employee compensation and questioned whether we were in a position, especially with what occurred at the jail, to provide a more favorable adjustment to salary for the employees. So instead of making, instead of making the increase 2% effective as of January 1st, could we make it 3%? And could we accelerate it to an earlier date?
Granted, but can we leave it at 92 cents, still have a negative contingency of 215,000 and push the raise to October?
Um, I'd have to run the numbers to be sure. I, I did not run that scenario, but I would say 3%.
You're increasing your contingency by 60,000.
Yes, we are. We are.
So I think the, let, let me, just for clarification purposes, I think what I understand you saying, Mr. Claffey, is that there was a comfort level previously with a negative contingency of up to $215,000.
Exactly.
And could that not be maintained with the same comfort level?
Correct.
Allowing us to do all of these things at a 92 cent rate rather than a 93 cent rate?
We were comfortable last week with that 215,000. Why has it dropped and the raises get moved?
The, the.
I'm all in favor of giving our employees a raise. I like this idea.
Yeah, at a 92 rate, you, you would, in backing it up, I mean, moving it to October 1st, probably going to have to increase the contingency by $138,000. We can do that. Makes it a little tougher, but I think we can still probably manage that. I wouldn't go any further. It would give me extreme distress.
Have we heard anything about the rescue plan? And are we going to be, any dollars from that? Are we comfortable or coming in and are going to help us with this budget?
I think that we will have some opportunities to replace some lost revenue. I don't have definitive language yet. I don't have a definitive amount, but I do know that it's going to be significant. As soon as we, we have the, the amount and the language finalized, we're going to meet with our auditors and strategize to, to make sure that any moves that we contemplate will meet the standard because they are the ones that will come in and audit our compliance.
And when do we assume to have further knowledge?
I would hope in May. But if it's anything resembling what happened a year ago, the initial language changed and changed and changed and changed.
All right, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Holmes.
Yes, I, I, I really hate the fact that, that we can't go ahead and do the raises for our employees in July. And I don't see why that we should cut the rate to 92 right now with the budget being tight. Why do we have to go with a contingency, negative contingency plan when we could move this stuff up? And, and, and we can always adjust our tax rates in a year or so, but you know, right now, you know, we're talking about, we can't, we can't even hire people to fill the buildings that we got open because we're hiring, trying to hire people at too low a rate. And I'm, right now, I'm paying 13, $15 an hour to dishwashers. And I mean, I, it's, it's really hard for them to hire people as to what we're allowing them to spend to get people in there. So we, we need to think about the way the job market is going to be because if things get really hot, we're not, we're not going to be able to hire anybody for, it's going to, we're going to have to pay a lot more for our employees.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
Here, I see what you're saying in 95 cents, but that means that you have not cut anything and you have given, based on the new assessment, you are incurring a 10.4% increase for the average homeowner. That's a lot of money for their tax bill to go up. We worry about water fees going up and it's one up $2 and $3 a month. But when you're talking about a 10% real estate tax, you're talking significant money. Now, the difference between the, the 95 cent tax rate and the 92 cent tax rate is $650, $646 according to these figures. I'm looking at this as a very real $646,000 saving to my homeowners, to the people that are paying for all these expenses. That's significant.
Steve, I think a lot of people would, would be willing to pay more in taxes if they knew that this was going for schools, it was going to make the city run better and things like that. But you know, I mean, because it isn't that huge of an amount. It sounds like a lot when you say 7, 9, 10%, but a lot of times it ain't that much over a year's period of time. And, and you know, I, I personally am willing to pay more taxes to make sure things run well. You know, we're talking about, we can't do beautification programs because we don't have the money for that, but everybody's wanting that. Everybody's wanting recycling, but we can't do that because we've got to buy a new truck and we've got to hire people to drive the truck, you know? And I just don't understand how we're going to do this with, with, and then, and then cut the budget back again. I mean, I could see the 93%. I mean, that's not something that, you know, I would much rather it be 95 or 94, but you know, if you cut it to 92, that's going to cut out a lot, it's going to make it a lot tighter for everybody.
Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Robertson.
I, and I
I, I, and I understand Terry, which, where you're saying, but I, I mean, I've asked Mr. Treier before and I said point blank, if we go at 92, will it affect any services that this city provides? The answer was no. And in the end, I still look at it. No matter what you charge, 92, 93, 94, 95, or $100, it is still bottom line, we are using the citizens' money. It's their money to start with. And we're just asking them to pay more, pay more. I'm not willing to do it. I want, no, so this counselor, when I vote, will be voting 92 because I'm not willing to just keep on saying, give me more, give me more. That's just my take. Now, everybody doesn't like it. I understand that, but like I said, it is this citizens' money to begin with. And I'm going to try to give them a little extra money in their pocket. Like I said, you know, and I, when I ran last, last year, I know we said, well, it doesn't seem like much. In my job, I've got people that come through and they can't even afford a dollar for their prescriptions. And you know, and, and I, I look at that and I just, it breaks my heart. And you know, people, people are paying, they can't pay a dollar for their, for their heart pills or the, or a dollar for their, for their uh, fluid pills that may affect their heart, may affect them from other issues. So yeah, I, if I can save the citizens a little money, I'm gonna do it.
Councilmember Mead.
Um, I just, uh, Mr. Haney provided some information to me about the breakdown of properties in the city. There are roughly 5,600 uh, properties in the city uh, in the average range of $157,000. That's 5,647 properties. Um, the, and I'm sorry, the range is 100,000 to 250,000. For those homeowners, the difference between 92 cents and 95 cents is about, uh, is less than $4 a month. Now, I'm not saying that's not significant when you can't afford a prescription. But I'd also like to point out that, um, that, uh, that a penny uh, or $200,000 roughly, 200 and some odd thousand dollars is, uh, is what this council voted on to pay for golf carts. So if you start with a penny for golf carts, you know, I think that, I think that is something we should, we should also be thinking about. So I also found that there are fewer than 100 properties in, in, in Stanton with an average value of about 657,000 dollars. Those folks, the difference between 92 cents and 95 cents is um, 38 minus 21, it's about uh, $17. And, and that's not insignificant, but these are property owners whose homes are, are on average valued at 657,000. So I think if we're looking at the majority of homeowners in Stanton, what we're doing by, by, uh, by providing for a mid-level, a 93 cent uh, tax uh, rate, it, unless, it's all an increase, right? Because assessed values run up. It, so, so in order not to increase taxes, it has to be 80 to 88 cents. Otherwise we're in, increasing taxes. So it becomes a matter of whether we're going to increase it by, uh, to, to, uh, by uh, uh, seven cents or, or rather by four cents or by five cents or six cents or seven cents. I think it's important that we put this in perspective. We, you know, people talk about averages. Well, if your head's in the oven and your feet are in the freezer, on average, you're comfortable. So that's what to me an average is and, and it's just not relative. I think, I, I think the, we, we look at the facts, we look at the majority of households and we look at the impact on those households. We say, can, can those folks who have $550,000 homes afford $17 a month? And that's less than what, what it costs to play a round of golf. So, uh, you know, I think, I, I think a 93 cent tax rate is a fair rate. It provides raises for our employees uh, at, at a time when, um, when uh, uh, the Augusta County, when localities all over the Commonwealth are increasing salaries by 3%. So in the long run, if we don't do that, if we aren't competitive with what is being offered around the Commonwealth, what'll happen? Our best people, the people we train, the people who are here for two or three years are going to look around and say, huh, I'm going to go someplace else. So, uh, so let's, uh, you know, let's keep it at 93. Uh, let's not go further than 93. Let's give our employees a raise.
Councilmember Holmes.
Yes, ma'am. Well, uh, you know, people are going to call you and they're going to complain about the snow not being removed from the streets or the pothole not filled on the streets or all these kinds of things. And you know, and if, if you start cutting all this money to the bone, how are we gonna, how are we gonna do these items that people won't done on a regular basis? People demand services. You know, they might not want to pay for it, but you can't get these services to people without having enough money in the bank to do, pay these people. And I just, I really do, I, I really hate the fact because it seems like with our, our, uh, employees, they're the first ones to get a cut, you know, or postpone a raise or something like that. And they, and these people work hard, they're dedicated. I mean, you ride by, these people are there on, all the time. And I just really think that we need to do things to help recruit people to here, to our city and also uh, to keep the people we got. And that's why I don't think we should postpone the raises.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Okay, in answer to some of that, I, as I spoke to Phil, Phil said that no services would be affected. No services will be affected. All those, the snow will be plowed up, all the trash will be picked up. As far as, we keep on talking about golf carts. I talked to Chris Tuttle and said, the previous councils, as far back as 2013 and earlier, had been asked by the, those, Chris and them, can we at least have enough money to, to replace two? Year after year, two golf carts? And the answer was, no, not this year. And so it just got to the point where the golf carts were at a, were literally, they were non-functional. So it was almost at the point, okay, let's say if we can make this, look, we might as well close it down. I mean, that's point what Chris said. If you don't give us something, it's basically beyond repair. And as far as the tax rate, like I said, doesn't seem like much. But if we keep this tax rate going up and it's, it's, yes, it's going to affect a little more. You know, you said, okay, we're trying to cut it, but yes, it's still going to be an increase. If we keep this up, more and more people are headed out a few miles outside the city because they can go to Augusta County and pay 60 some cents.
63 cents.
63 cents. So now granted, the county's got some problems. I understand that. But there's quite a bit of disparity there that, uh, you know, we're trying to at least make, you know, the tax a little bit better and so that more and more people aren't headed that way.
Councilmember Claffey.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I, I agree. One of the things that I, I said in my campaign was we want to keep tax rates competitive. Now, I know we're charging more than Augusta County, significantly more. I am pleased with this budget presentation because it gave the schools more money than ever. Let me repeat that. It gave the schools more money than they've ever received. And it maintained services, according to Mr. Treier, like Vice Mayor Robertson was just pointing out. And the fact that, Madam, is we didn't raise fees on every little item on this thing. We held them standard. We kept them right where they were. So we are getting competitive, but we don't want to lose sight of the fact that our constituents are going to be paying significantly more money next year because their assessments went up on an average of 10.4%.
Councilmember Mead.
I, uh, with respect to services, I, I think that eliminating curbside recycling is an impact on services. And uh, I think we, we, um, we were not able to fund a $135,000 snowplow. Uh, I, I can't imagine that that won't affect services. Um, you know, I, I, I think, you know, it, budgets are about choices and I'm sure that if Mr. Johnston's argument uh, for $135,000 snowplow was as compelling as his argument to discontinue curbside recycling, uh, you, you know, it, it just didn't happen. Uh, you just, it, it just didn't happen. But, but you know, back to Mr. Claffey's, uh, you know, the, again, the 5,647 properties in Stanton that range in value from 100,000 to 250,000, we'll probably see about um, a 50 or 60 dollar, a $60, in fact, a $60 increase in annual taxes. And that's about uh, $5 a month if you, if you add a 92 cent level. And, and the incremental increase to 93 is just, it's a, it's a cup of, it's a latte. And, and I, I don't mean to be, uh, I don't, I don't mean to make light of that. Uh, but uh, because, because many people can't afford a latte. Um, but it's, it, it is not, it, it's not a lot of money. Uh, and again, that's 5,647 households. Those, that, that's the majority. That's the, that's that big uh, median uh, of, of how homeowner in the city. You know, there are folks who own multiple properties, uh, they're landlords. Uh, they, they may, you know, may choose to increase rents by 10% because their property values went up. Um, and that might make uh, renting an apartment more expensive. And I'm sensitive to that too. But this is not a, th- this is not a huge, huge number, I don't think, for most households.
I'm good right now.
Okay. All right. Um, Mr. Treier, uh, when you talk about the negative contingency, that's used as a tool or a device, if you will, that can be made up through savings?
Yeah, the idea is, is that we don't necessarily have to go in and, and, and pinpoint individual departments at this time. Some savings are, are going to naturally occur most likely during the course of the year. Could be um, uh, staffing gaps or, or, or maybe we, we have a warmer than the normal winter type thing. But something will pop up, we believe, that, that that will allow us to, to offset this. I mean, it's, it's high, 300 is high, but, but we'll still be able to manage that uh, and get through that.
Um, with the American Recovery Act, we are hoping anywhere between 11 to 13 million?
Yeah, um, yeah, about eight to 13, I think. Um, um, that number's in play depending on whether or not we're counted twice or not, I guess, as a county and a city. But uh, certainly significant money. Uh, we, we, we know that there's initial provisions in there that will allow uh, replenishment of revenue, whether or not that uh, is overall revenue or specific line items. Uh, we understand that they're seeking, uh, there's, there's bodies seeking clarification to allow for specific line items which would give us complete flexibility at that point. Um, so we do think that there's some opportunities there, yes.
And at the 92 cents tax rate, we are offering a 3% um, some raise for the employees.
Back to January 1st, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Or, or potentially October 1st.
Oh, yes, yes.
October 1st.
Sorry, I was looking at the slide.
Right. Uh, one more question. Um, can you advise us how the Gypsy Hill Golf Course is doing at this time during the pandemic? And do you have um, any observations of how it will continue to do in the future?
Well, I, I, I can say during the pandemic and, and really prior to the pandemic, um, um, seems like since, since we started focusing attention on it, the um, last two years, the uh, level play has picked up significantly. Um, I don't have uh, the most recent data right now at my fingertips, but uh, it, it, it does seem to be showing a positive trend line right now. Whether or not that, that, that is sustainable post-pandemic, you know, can't tell you, but it, it seems to be improving.
I have one more question. Mr. Rosenberg, um, have you received many complaints from this past winter with snow removal?
Well, let me, but, let me answer that question by saying that every time we have inclement weather, we receive complaints about snow removal. So I, I, they're no more common this past winter than they have been in prior winters. But we receive every year um, with every event, with every weather event, a series of complaints.
But no more than you would at years past?
It's, it's a constant.
Um, Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. I'm, I, um, if, uh, if the golf carts are that bad, how is it that, uh, that rounds played is up so much? Uh, you know,
They're running.
Madam Mayor.
If they're, if, and I, let me just finish. I, uh, you know, I think a compromise might be to delay ordering half of those golf carts until, uh, until such time as the golf course demonstrates that it can continue to attract uh, new players and that they are successful in their efforts to, to bring young people to the golf course. I think that was the whole, uh, the, the whole thing. So, so uh, spend $100,000 on golf courts, golf carts and hold $100,000 uh, is a part of that sort of contingency. I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Councilmember Claffey.
We're back at the golf carts. It's, um, I, I'm going to try to give this argument one more time and I hope it gets through. Currently they have 23 carts that are functional. Last Saturday, all carts were being utilized on the course by 9:30 AM. If you only have that many carts, they, they go out in about eight groups. You're going to use up all your carts. By the time you get eight groups out on a course, you have 18 holes on a course and you can continue to put more people out on the course, playing the course, but they can't get a cart. So they have to wait until the carts get turned back in at between 12 and 2 o'clock in the afternoon and then they go out. Or the ones that show up at 10 o'clock and don't get a cart, go to angle side. Or they go to other facilities that will at least allow them a cart. The big fundraiser for, to use a golf course is tournaments. When you have a tournament, you have 100 golfers coming out at one time. They do something called a shotgun start where everybody goes to a different hole and you put four players on every single hole times 18 holes. And usually you can get 20 groups out there and you're putting 80 golfers out there at one time. They can complete their round in four hours. And you can get all that revenue in a four hour period. And then at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, you open up the course for public play. That's how you can double the amount of rounds that are played. We are going to approximately 10,000 rounds in this year, which is the most rounds ever played in Gypsy Hill in Wes Alred's memory. Yesterday, we had a first tee program. And yes, it did snow on the way home after we had 14 kids out there playing. And what Wes did, which is a genius idea, he closed down the first hole, put the kids down there in the valley, used it as a driving range, started all play on the fourth hole so that no one was interfering and the kids had a safe area down there. We had Tom Tattersall, Wes Alred, Nate Hildebrand and myself helping to train some children who had never played golf before. They were between the ages of five and 14. They enjoyed themselves immensely. We had the first tee program going at the country club at Ironwood. Golf is happening, folks. Let's stop whining about buying some golf carts. The golf carts should have been bought years ago. And everybody said, no, we can't afford golf carts. We can't afford golf carts. So you're now down to 23 functional golf carts. You've, you've missed the boat for years. We're here to rectify the situation. I'm, I'm pretty emphatic on that point. I hope that answers your questions, Ms. Mead.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Uh, Councilmember Holmes had his hand up.
Okay, I just want to say one thing. This is not the largest budget we've ever gave the school system. And I mean, uh, uh, it, it, it's not, uh, that's not true. Uh, and we strive every time we do the budget to give them equal share of our tax revenues and stuff. So I, I know that that's not true, but also I want to say too that I don't really care about the golf course uh, carts really. I mean, you know, we fought that argument, we lost. I mean, and it, and the fact that we're going, I mean, and, and the fact that we're going, we could use that money now to give raises to our employees. You know, I would like to, I want to see these employees get these raises because we're going to lose employees. And I, I don't want to have a $300,000 negative contingency plan. I think if we go, if we go with a 93 cent, that's, I don't know how much that's going to be an increase on people's real estate tax, but it can't be, I mean, she's already said what a 95 cent was, which was like $60. So I, I can't imagine it being that much more. And everybody would benefit from this. You know, and that's, that's, I mean, you know, when you come in here and you say you're set on a certain rate and you're not going to bend, where's the compromise in that? You know, where is the compromise in this, this stuff? I mean, and it's, it's very aggravating because you want us to participate and you want us to, to give you our views, but you've already decided what you're going to do before we get in here. And that, and that's, that's really hard. It's hard to deal with all the time. But anyway, that's what I wanted to say. I'm sorry.
Great. Councilmember Doll?
If we're, if our main focus is to not raise taxes no matter what, why aren't any of you advocating for 88 cents? That's no tax raise right there. Anything else is a tax increase.
Correct. I think.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I, I mean, I think the answer to that, Councilor Doll, is, is that we are trying to give our employees the raises. We're trying to come to a somewhat of a compromise because originally what the city was saying was January 1. We're trying to back that up till October. And we are also trying to basically, as I talked to Phil, with those kind, at that rate, we can actually make sure that no, all the services are going to stay. Yes, I know Ms. Mead is talking about, you know, the, the recycling program, but that's something that the city said that they want to try. And I'm willing to give them a try. I mean, I think, you know, so basically, we can give this, give, let the city try the recycling program. We can try to maybe help lower the tax rate a little bit. We've met the city, we've met the school system halfway. And we're trying to make sure we do a rate that is going to let all the programs go ahead and go forth. So I mean,
Okay, are we ready?
No, this is Carolyn Doll. I just want to clarify that it's a tax increase. You can't say you're lowering it. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is that the 93 cent tax rate would allow us to continue curbside recycling, which every citizen, 100% of the citizens that I have had any input on want curbside recycling. I think it was done too quickly. I think we didn't educate people enough in how to recycle. I don't think we're giving the recycling uptick in prices a chance to, to see. We're, we're maybe missing an opportunity to buy a recycling truck with this new funding. Because if we don't have curbside recycling, we sure as heck can't buy the truck. But if we still have it, we could buy the truck with those funds. And, and, you know, I, I think 92 cents means we probably won't have half of our public works positions filled. If you looked at the vacancies, there's at least, I don't know, six or eight that, that vacancies in public works. And so, yes, services will be affected because we can't hire anybody. And it's because if we don't have any cushion at all, we can't make any adjustments in, in that particular department. Clearly, we're not paying enough money or we could fill those positions.
All right. At this point, why don't we go ahead and try to come to a consensus as far as giving Mr. Rosenberg some direction? So I, Councilor Doll, you had mentioned the 93 cent tax rate. You were in support of that in keeping the recycling curbside service?
Correct. And if, and if no one wants to support that, then I'll support 88 cents.
Okay. Councilor Darby?
Mayor Oaks, I support the 92 cent real estate tax rate because it is, we will, we will be working with the schools to offer them half of, of, but we'll cover the gap. It does allow for the salary increase, which I think is really important. I wish that we would have known about that extra 1% prior to yesterday. And I feel like that no core services, based on everything that I've, I've talked to Mr. Traer, Chevron, and things that we've heard here are not going to be affected. And so that's where I stand on the matter.
Councilmember Holmes?
Well, I'd really like to see it be 95 cents and stay, but I'm, I'm more for the 93 than, I'm not, I'm totally against 92. Because I think that we're tying Phil's hands. If we have any, say we have another flood or we have something that's really a catastrophe, we, we're not going to have the money to, to be, be able to deal with these kinds of things without really cutting our services somewhere else. And people demand certain services. And we don't, you know, they don't, they might not realize that that's what their taxes go for. But I, I think right now, if you cut any services at all, you're going to have people raising cane.
Councilor Mead?
I'll let you pass on, go with someone else, please.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I'm supportive of 92, trying the, the recycling program. And yeah, that, yeah, makes everything we talked about.
Councilor Claffey?
I'd like to try the new recycling program. See what happens. The city is going to free up some employees for the city in public works. They're going to have to man the recycle station, but they're not going to be driving up and down the street every day. So I, I'm hoping that there, there is some, some personnel that's going to be freed up for them. And I think it's a worthy try, since we're going to be able to get back into the plastics business. And I, I think less than 2% is going into the landfill as it is from, from the recycling. That's all we're really saving. And most of this stuff is going straight to the landfill anyway. So I hope that by getting into that, we're going to be able to benefit from the, the plastic recycling. I'm in favor of that. I think the 92 cent tax rate is going to force the city to be cautious. A lot of times you hear of government, they say, ask for this budget and it will get the money. And then we have to spend it this year because we can't have it for next year. I think if we attempt to go into the year with a conscious idea that we have to be cost conscious in savings, it's going to save us some money and we're going to find the savings. If we look for it, we'll find them. And I think that's what Mr. Traer is saying. And I trust them that we're not going to cut any services.
Councilor Mead, did you want to make any comments at this time?
I'd like to see the tax rate at 93, and I'd like to see the salary increase at July 1st, 2021.
Okay. I would like to see the tax rate at 92 cents. And I'd like to try the pilot program for recycling. I am excited about the fact that we will be receiving anywhere between eight and 13 million through the American Recovery Act. I am glad to see that we do have a cooperative relationship with the school board. And I am hopeful that the school board will be seeing the 5.8 million next month in the American Recovery Act funds. I believe that a 3% salary at, starting October 1st is fair and will keep us competitive. I also feel confident that no services will be cut per the recommendation of our chief financial officer and that the negative contingency will be made up through savings and potentially through the American Recovery Act. So, Mr. Rosenberg, it looks like.
I just have one more. If you don't mind. I'd also like to say, I, I would like very much to hear what the citizens have to say during the public hearing. And I would hope that whatever positions are taken or have been taken might be influenced by what the taxpayers have to say as well.
We, we do not have a public hearing set for this. We have a vote.
Oh.
Councilmember Holmes?
Phil, can you tell me about how much we cut out of this budget before we got to this point?
It's 3.2 million. I'll look it up to make sure. Yeah, 3.2 million.
And where did the majority of that money come from? I'm sorry.
Okay. It's kind of all over the board. We, we had $472,000 in wages. We had 300 plus in police. We had about 43, I believe, in fire, but they also contributed 180 with, with personnel reductions. Schools were reduced about $200,000. The debt sinking fund was reduced about $400,000. We have enough to get through this year, but any future projects, we'll, we'll need to incorporate an additional general fund transfer. We reduced the jail initially of $800,000 from their, their initial request. So it's kind of all over the board.
I was going to say, just, you know, could you foresee anything coming up in the following year that, that could really set us back a pace?
I don't, I don't want to have a repeat of August. But you know, we'll move forward and we'll handle whatever situation comes our way and bring it to council at the appropriate time.
Councilor Claffey?
I was merely going to mention the fact that when Councilman Holmes says, what did you cut the budget? That's from a request. That's not from the last year's budget. And I just want to mention that last year's adopted budget was 114 million. 2020, before COVID, the, the, well, 19 would have been the last full year, was 113.9 million. And we're talking about 130 million this year. It's not like we're cutting. We're adding. We're adding more services and we're paying more for them.
Paying more for them, but we're not really adding any service.
I agree, but this is not a matter that, this is cutting from requests. This is not, when you're looking at the actual dollars, it's significantly higher than any other budget that has ever been put into this city, has ever been passed by this city. Am I, am I right, Phil?
It is the highest budget. I think that there's been quite a few mandated costs in recent years. And I think about 6.9 million of that can probably be attributed to the Gardner Springs Water Project. But, 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 but you are correct. It, it is the highest budget that we've had.
Okay, it looks like, Mr. Rosenberg, the majority is in favor of a 92 cent.
Can I ask Mr. Traer to go back to the slide with the options? So what I understand is that it seems a majority is interested in an ordinance with a 92% tax rate, a central recycling location and the discontinuation of curbside recycling, a raise of 3% for city employees effective as of October 1st of 2021, and an increase in the negative contingency above 156,000 in an amount sufficient to move that salary increase forward by three months, whatever that number is.
Correct.
Correct.
Ms. Darby, is that?
Yes, yeah.
This is Carolyn Doll. What, what is that amount?
138,000.
So the total negative contingency would be about $290,000, $300,000?
Correct.
The tax rate will go from 95 to 92 as far as the ordinance that will be presented. Understanding that that is still a tax increase because 88 cents would be level funding. However, in comparison to the assessments, the hope is to ease the burden of the tax increase.
So we'll, we'll have documents ready that reflect that in time for your regular meeting.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Now, with respect to the next item, Madam Mayor, the update on Stanton Crossing, I think you have a couple, you have three choices. One, I don't think that Mr. Vaughn's presentation is lengthy. So you could do it and eat into your break a little bit. Two, we could do it during the regular meeting. Or three, we could reschedule it for your next meeting.
What is counsel's pleasure?
I would like to hear it.
I don't want to hear it tonight.
If it's not going to take that long, we'd like to go ahead and hear it. Welcome, Mr. Vaughn.
Get your keyboard. So I get a ticket with me? Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'll try to make this quick and thanks for not making me come back tonight.
You've been here all day, I know.
Yes. I'm here to talk about the Stanton Crossing recommendations and the Stanton Crossing business plan with the focus on the demolition. But first of all, I just want to show you. I said it wasn't going to take long. I'm going to skip that. This map shows Stanton Crossing. And we're looking from the left, which is Richmond Road, to the right, which is towards Valley Center Drive. And this is North Frontier Drive. There 19 buildings that are slated for demolition at this point with building 126 sort of up in the air at this point. The red circled numbers denotes the buildings that have been demolished to date. And the yellow circled numbers are those buildings that the hazardous materials have been removed and the buildings have been certified and clear, cleared and certified for demolition. So that gives you an idea of the status of the project. Building 127, which is a building that a portion of it is within the temporary construction easement for the new road that will run through Stanton Crossing. That one as well has been cleared for of all hazardous materials, and it is the next building to be demolished. I want to show you a flyover of the campus prior to the demolition. Again, this is North Frontier Drive. Richmond Road is here in this general area. This is the entrance boulevard with the roundabout off in the distance. Again, building 126, which there is interest in this building by the school board. This building has been demolished. The power plant has been demolished. And you see that this site is quite large. This building has been demolished. So has this one. You'll know this building has been demolished, but you'll see in a later drone footage that tree still stands, protecting the trees where possible. Here's the one that's partially within the VDOT construction easement. And this building has been demolished. You can see in the background, seven eleven and the two hotels. And now I'm going to confuse you and start from the entrance off of Richmond Avenue. Again, the two hotels, you see the seven eleven with the slurpee on the roof. Who are subject for Rodney.
I wondered about that.
This area is, is currently under construction for the new Chipotle and Jersey Mike, I believe, sandwich shop, and the third tenant that, at this point, we don't know. I think Macy's is going right here.
You're teasing me.
Yes, I am.
I miss Macy.
I'm gonna jump a little bit ahead here. Well, I better not. Okay, this is one of the buildings that has been demolished. You notice the tree still standing in the middle?
We appreciate that since Arbor Day is coming up.
And here's the other building site. The building has been demolished, but the tree's still standing in the middle. And then a site here, here, they've been demolished. This gives you a real perspective of how large this campus truly is.
And flat.
And flat. These buildings have been cleared of asbestos. It's some of the rubble, some of the debris, I think, has been temporarily placed here. Will either be carried offsite or crushed and buried within the foot of the foundations of the buildings. The laundry and then the power plant has been demolished. Again, North Frontier, National Avenue, Valley Center Drive. Skip ahead. They are salvaging the shingles off of this, the stone, off the roofs of these buildings before they demolish them. You can see the debris, the salvage material here, the metal that will be sold off, that's been pulled from the buildings. And we're, seriously, we're trying to retain all the trees that are not within a twenty-foot distance of the buildings. Yes, sir.
Did I see, was there a private home back that way?
There is one.
Across from the building and schools there.
Yes.
It's not part of this.
There's a home right here. Oh, yeah, there's one right here. It's rental property. It is not owned by the EDA. And then one last, skip this, in the essence of time. It just takes us back to the entrance. The main entrance. The contractor has twelve months to complete the demolition, which it began on January the fourth. One, one more video. I just want to show you just quickly the route of the new road. It will go in this direction. That's the building that's within the easement for the construction. But across this knoll, and then somewhere in this general direction, in the master plan, this area is slated for the data center. And so the main road would come across this knoll, and there'll be a roundabout in this general area, going back to the building that the school board is interested in. That road connecting to that school board site is not in any plans at this time. We'll probably end up applying for another smart scale grant from VDOT to get it fully funded. But that road, the new road, will continue over this knoll, and then there's a drainage swell here. The drop down, and you can see it'll come back up and connect to the cul-de-sac on Valley Center Drive. So you'll be able to drive from Richmond Road all the way back to the new Western State along this new road. I think I started to say that the contractor started January the fourth, has twelve months to complete the project, nineteen buildings, and he has so far demolished six of them. So he's on track to meet that deadline. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Counselmember Mead.
Mr. Vaughn, I think I saw a presentation in the EDA, new member orientation, the projection of the revenues that the property will generate, including the existing businesses? And did that also include the Chipotle, an estimate of what Chipotle and Jersey Mike's and whatever that third business might be?
That was a revenue projection that I think was developed in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, and it was for the first phase of Stanton Crossing, which is about twenty or twenty-five acres that the Stanton Crossing Partners purchased from the city and to develop. And we had identified in our discussions with them, their plans, plans were to do two hotels, gas station convenience store, a grocery store, and I think one or two fast food operations. I don't recall the annual dollar amount, but it was probably a build out about a million dollars a year.
I thought it was closer to a million, two or a million.
It may have been a million, two a year in revenue.
Of revenue, and, and remind me what our annual debt service is on?
I believe it's one point two million dollars.
It is one point two.
So we're approaching breakeven, at least from a cash flow perspective?
Well, that's just on the front twenty-five acres, and we still have another two seventy-five that once we get these buildings down.
I understand. I just wanted to try to get a feel for what the, you know, what we sort of have in hand versus what the current debt services.
Yeah, Counselmember Mead, may I remind you that the lodging taxes that have come in have dropped off dramatically since COVID, and that lodging is down over fifty percent this year. So therefore, they are not getting anywhere near what they had forecasted, you know, five years ago.
No, I understand they're not getting that because of COVID, but we do expect COVID to, you know, eventually turn to normal.
I think they were, I would say they were probably exceeding our projections from two thousand and sixteen. That was prior to anything being built, but just in an attempt to determine, sort of looking at return on investment, whether or not it was a good deal to engage with the local developers on this site, and it has been. And with the exception of the pandemic, I think we'll see that we'll probably continue to exceed our projections from two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any quick questions? Because we really need to go on break.
Thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, so we will return at six thirty, but right now we are on break. Okay, we are back from break, and we're now on item number four, a discussion of municipal elections in November. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John Blair, the city's attorney, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. Counselor Mead had asked for this agenda item, and I'd like to provide you with a very brief overview, given the fact I know you're trying to stay on schedule, but I want to also allow for time for questions. And so what I wanted to do is talk about this past session of the General Assembly. There was legislation enacted, Senate Bill eleven fifty-seven, which in effect overrides all city charters and overrides the certain provisions in the Code of Virginia that allowed for cities and towns to hold their council elections in May. And Stanton has held its elections in May pursuant to both the city charter and those state code provisions. This legislation requires, beginning with elections starting in January first of two thousand and twenty-two, that all city and town elections be moved to November. It also requires the adoption of an ordinance by the local governing body to that effect. I do want to highlight, and, and I think it is worth noting, the school board, I put the line in your agenda briefing concerning the school board, but the school board is, is tied by the exact same legislation. And in Virginia, whenever your, your city council elections are held, if you have an elected school board, the school board elections are to be held at the same time pursuant to Virginia Code, code section twenty-four point two dash two two three. And so, you know, the school board, I'm afraid, for them, they're, they're in the same situation that you are. There, they, there's no discretion, so to speak. You, you have been mandated by the state to adopt an ordinance to move the elections to November instead of May, beginning in two thousand and twenty-two. I do want to offer this. All of you, congratulations. We'll have an additional six months added to your term if you adopt the ordinance to extend or to move the elections to November of two thousand and twenty-two. And I want to point out that the legislation does in fact state that if your terms were to expire June thirtieth, they are extended through December thirty-first. So again, terms are extended for six months pursuant to this Senate bill. At this point, I'm happy to take questions from the council. I know there probably are some. It's, it's brand-new legislation, and again, it's sort of a mandate from Richmond that local, our cities and towns will now hold their elections in November.
Counselmember Mead.
Mr. Blair, would you speak to, there are a couple of localities who have moved quickly to bring their elections to November of two thousand and twenty-one. So would you speak to that and, and whether it's possible for us to go ahead and do the same here?
Yes, Counselor Mead, I am familiar that Fredericksburg has moved its elections to twenty, November of two thousand and twenty-one.
Galax, too.
Galax as well, and I believe Chesapeake considered the matter last week and defeated it on a five-four vote. So let's talk about that. Virginia Code Section twenty-four point two dash two 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 point one, which is in your packet, provides, and I, I want to be clear here because this is, the reason they're acting so quickly is SB eleven fifty-seven is effective January one, two thousand and twenty-two. So you cannot move elections to an odd year after this year unless the state enacts new legislation. So Galax and Fredericksburg decided that they would prefer to have their city council elections in odd years rather than even years. And so they moved their elections. Now, I do want to point out, that is in the council's authority for the next, let's see, today's April twenty-second. So that'd be forty-seven days, and, and what I was doing, the math in my head, is this. If you wanted to move the city council elections of Stanton from May of two thousand and twenty-two, and that would be Counselors Mead, Holmes, and Doll, your election would, would have been in May of two thousand and twenty-two, but those three seats would be up for election in November. And the forty-seven days, the reason I was calculating was because the deadline for any individual to submit their petitions to be on the November ballot in Virginia is June eighth. That's forty-seven days from today. And so if you were even considering that, the one other aspect I want to point out is the way the calendar falls, the city council's next meeting is May the thirteenth. That's the earliest you could adopt an ordinance, and so if, if you were going to try to move the elections from May of two thousand and twenty-two to November of two thousand and twenty-one, and you adopted your ordinance on May the thirteenth of this year, that would give, in effect, twenty-six days for people to collect one hundred and twenty-five signatures for their petitions. So that's maybe a lengthy answer. Are there other aspects to the question that you would like me to address?
No, that's it. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
There was another issue related to the election of a mayor by council versus the election of mayor by the, by the citizens.
Correct, and I don't want to be, I don't want to be too critical, but, but let's, I, I do think it is worth pointing out that the legislation did not consider, it addressed election of mayor by a popular vote. But there are many cities, including Danville and Lynchburg, and towns similar to Stanton in which the mayor is not elected via direct popular vote. Instead, you all elect the mayor every two years at your organizational meeting in July. The legislation didn't, didn't contemplate that, that, that there are mayors that are elected by councils in July that have two-year terms by city charters, and so there is an ambiguous line in SB eleven fifty-seven, and it is my hope to ask for an opinion of the Attorney General that will clarify that, based on the state code and this legislation, that Mayor Oaks's term as mayor would be extended through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, because otherwise, there are two points, and I'll try to be brief here. Otherwise, you would have a mayor elected in July and council elections that occur in November. So number one, anybody who's up for reelection in November, which would be yourself, Counselor Holmes, and Counselor Doll, I don't think you could legally offer yourself as a candidate for mayor in July of two thousand and twenty-two because, in effect, we don't know if you will meet the eligibility requirements to meet a two-year term, and the same goes for Counselors Darby, Claffey, and Robertson, and Oaks in two thousand and twenty-four. If you elect a mayor in July, but they're to be elected in November, I don't think you actually meet the eligibility requirements because you couldn't fulfill the two-year term if you weren't reelected. So that's, I, I do hope the AG can return an opinion that will clarify this.
Are there any other questions? So essentially, we're looking at the potential of having an election this November, but that only, we would have to vote on an ordinance on May thirteenth, and that would give twenty-six days to collect signatures on a petition. The other option is to, according to what the General Assembly has just passed, to have the elections in November of two thousand and twenty-two rather than May.
Correct.
Which would give six months, basically, six additional months to everyone.
Everyone's term is extended by six months.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That takes us to the next item, which is item number five, a closed meeting for discussion of prospective candidates for the position of clerk of council. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that council-
I move that council enter a closed meeting for the discussion of prospective candidates for appointment to the position of clerk of council pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
Councilmember Darby, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We are now in closed session.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second, to this Chair Holmes.
Right, Councilmember Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are back in the work session, and now we are closing the work session meeting out, and we will return for the regular meeting at 7:30. The work session meeting is now closed. As mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. Starting tonight, the public may also livestream video of city council work sessions and regular meetings. Instructions for accessing, accessing the meetings can be found on the city's website at www.ci.stanton.v a.us backslash council. All right. I would just like to remind everyone when you're in the chambers as well as City Hall, please keep your mask on. And also just wanted to remind everyone once again that we do have some hand sanitizer at the entrance of the chambers and sanitizing wipes at the podium. And please be mindful of social distancing. I have been asked to let everyone know that if you are not able to find a seat within the chambers, we do offer seating out in the hallway. So if you could, please find a seat out in the hallway. We do have an intercom system out in the hallway in which you can listen to the meeting. So if you're not in a designated seat that has been allowed due to the COVID-19, if you can find a seat out in the hallway, we would appreciate it. All right, the next item on the agenda, oh, just one other thing. I've, when council members speak, if you can please address the mayor, and then mayor will recognize you, and then you can make your comments, and you can ask your questions. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to do so, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the invocation moment of silence, and tonight, that will be Councilmember Holmes.
It's not so much a prayer, but I would like to, seeing how our country seems to be so divided around different issues, and I know here on council, we're, we seem to be pretty divided. And I think we all care about the city, but we just can't seem to come together. And, and I was hoping that we would have some, we would start to compromise a little bit on each side for the good of the city and, and for, and, and just to get the job done that we're, we were elected to do. Pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so the next item, the mayor's report. And the first item will be the reading of an Arbor Day proclamation. Proclamation Arbor Day, April 30th, 2021. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of the precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, the city of Stanton is being honored this year for the 25th time as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stanton City Council that April 30th, 2021 is hereby designated as Arbor Day in the city of Stanton, and council urges the residents of Stanton, the region, and communities across the country to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Adopted this 22nd day of April, 2021, Andrea W. Oaks, Mayor. And it's my understanding Mr. Sensenball, with our city horticulturist, is here to accept the proclamation.
Well, good evening. Thank y'all for having me again. This is my, I think, my annual trip to City Hall. We've been pretty busy over the course of the last year, but we've gotten some good projects done that are tree-related. We just finished up with two grant-related projects. The nice thing is the Virginia Department of Forestry helped us out, and we were actually able to come in under budget. So the Trees for Clean Water Grant and the Ash Replacement Grants, both, we were able to plant more trees than we had budgeted for. Tomorrow is kind of the official release for our tree tour for Gypsy Hill Park. The tour is actually based on the Trapeps app, and it's an interactive tour. You can download the Trapeps app for free. There'll be 30 stops in Gypsy Hill, and it's kind of a neat mix. It tells you about some of the old trees, some of the newer trees, and some of the park history, anywhere from the origins in 1889 all the way up to the big Duratio Storm a few years ago. And the last thing that I wanted to mention that I would be remiss if I didn't is Shenandoah Green has been pretty busy with their project, with the Legacy Tree Project. They did quite a bit of planting in the fall, and then they're working on their spring plantings now. Between the seedlings that they've planted and the trees that they've planted, they're approaching tree number 2,000. So that's pretty cool. Nice thing about that project is we've been able to work with Dr. Smith and add some really nice shade trees on three of the school grounds, and we're hoping to continue that in the fall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good deal.
Yes, definitely. Sensenball does a tremendous job. All right, so the next item is a proclamation concerning Bike Month. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation Bike Month, May 2021. Whereas, bicycling has been an important part of the lives of many Americans for more than a century. And today's city of Stanton residents of all ages engage in bicycling for transportation, recreation, fitness, and fun. And whereas, bicycling offers independent mobility for Stantonians traveling between work, school, and home. And when used as a means of transportation, benefits all residents of Stanton by easing traffic congestion, reducing air pollution, and saving highway construction dollars. And whereas, bicycling is recognized as an activity that can reduce the onset of chronic diseases and childhood obesity. And its consideration in transportation and land use planning will help create a healthier and more active community in Stanton. And whereas, bicycling offers a unique perspective from which residents and visitors may discover Stanton's natural beauty, history, and culture. And whereas, Bike Month provides an opportunity to increase public awareness of the many benefits of bicycling, to promote bicyclist safety, and to encourage bicycling. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that May 2021 is hereby designated as Bike Month. The city of Stanton and the council recognize with great appreciation the efforts of the Stanton Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to foster a more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly community. Adopted this 22nd day of April, 2021, Andrea Oaks, Mayor. And it's my understanding Brian Brown, Vice Chair of the Bicycling and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, will be here. There you are.
On behalf of the committee, you know, we would just like to thank council's continued support for the improvements in our bicycle and pedestrian areas. You see, in 2018, the committee was able to present a plan for improvements throughout the city. Council was adopted that plan, and the committee looks forward to many of those recommendations being implemented in the future. Most recently, the Greenways Plan was developed by the committee, again, adopted by council. Excited about some of those projects coming to fruition in the future. One of the projects that will be coming very soon is improvements to Gypsy Hill Park regarding signage, road barking, to help with some of the congestion and understanding of the right of ways and helping with pedestrian and bicycle safety in the park as well. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Captain Brown. Hey, at this time, I would like to recognize a school board member, Ron Ramsey. And Ron, did you have an announcement that you wanted to make?
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that, I believe it was last week, it was announced that the Valley Children's Advocacy Center is having its first Save Jane event at Gypsy Hill Park this weekend. And it was originally scheduled for Saturday from noon to 6:00, and due to the weather forecast, it has been moved to Sunday. Same scheduling of noon to 6:00, but going for a day where it's not 90-plus percent chance of rain.
Smart move. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, so the next item under the mayor's report, I would like to give an update concerning the mayor's and chair's unofficial committee meeting. We met, we all met this past week, and I have some notes on my phone that I'm just going to go ahead and read to you. An update on the discussions regarding Middle River Regional Jail. Here, this is just a quick synopsis of the meeting. The five localities are favoring moving forward with the proposed general renovations, support services, and maintenance warehouse needs. These upgrades would simply be renovations and not adding any bids. Number two, collectively hiring a consultant to structure a strong resolution for the jurisdictions to pass, in addition to being the lead on insisting the DOC changes. So we would not have long-term inmates at Middle River Regional Jail. This would include lobbying our state-elected officials and persons that are considering to run for these positions. We are trying to change the code back as it was, where it stated that only allowed DOC inmates to be housed at regional facilities for 60 days. Number three, to move forward with establishing an alternative commission to research, develop, and advocate for criminal justice reform on behalf of the regional partners. This should include a scope of work and a structured timeframe. So that's basically what we reviewed at our last meeting. So we are moving forward, and we are hoping to have some RFPs presented concerning hiring a lobbyist to, well, lobby the DOC, and like I said, our state legislators, along with any candidates that are interested in running for state positions. The next item under the mayor's report, I did want to let everyone know that, um, yes, the uncodified emergency ordinance has been removed. However, the council plans on having discussions concerning our procedure of memorandums. And during this discussion, we would like to talk about having citizens' ability to call in. So that would be part of the conversations when we discuss the procedure of memorandum, which, um, this is just our basic rules for the city council. These are procedures for this council. All right, I believe that's it. Under the mayor's report, are there any additional items by members of council?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I wanted to say this, again, I'm bringing up vaccinations for COVID. And I'm speaking, you know, basically with Augusta Health, because I do work there and help with the clinic quite often. Steve was telling me, I think as of Monday, we were talking, the Augusta Health has given approximately, that was first Monday, like 48,000 vaccinations, I believe. Probably more than that now. That's, but that's, you know, that includes first vaccination, second dose. Up, up until this time, you know, up to the last several months, basically, a clinic would come available, and within two, two and a half hours, it was full. 1,1200 shots full. Unfortunately, back about a week ago, two weeks ago, we started seeing a drop-off. And it's not just us, this is nationwide. Unfortunately, I think part of it also coincided with the J&amp;J announcement about putting it in on a whole. But I mean, all I can say is I want to encourage you, please, please consider getting the vaccination. It is very simple. Given some pamphlets to the city manager to hopefully we can get them out on our website. We can maybe get these up throughout City Hall and different places. It is very simple. and you can really go right on that website, and you can set up an appointment. It's very easy to do. We also said if you, no computer, no problem. On these forms, you can call 540-332-5122, and they can get you set up to get a shot. Like I said, I, I know we've hit that, that we're, we're all right on the second doses, but where we went the other day is we had 1,000 vaccinations possible, and four to 500 time slots went unused. That is a big, big drop-off. I know there's some, some people are worried about it, but I'm telling you, these shots are really life-saving. And if we can't get herd immunity in this nation, it's going to be a long time before we get rid of these. So I'm pleased asking you, please consider getting a shot. The other people say, hey, I've already had COVID, I don't need it. I'm also telling you that the immunity from the vaccination is a lot stronger than what we call convalescent immunity. The antibodies from having COVID- we call convalescent immunity, the antibodies from having COVID. So again, consider it. I please ask you, please to consider this. As I said, these hopefully will be made available, and you'll see them around the campus and hopefully on the website. Thank you very much for listening.
Any additional items from council members? Hearing none, I'll accept an approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of April 8, 2021. You're up.
I'm looking for the words. Terry, you got them? All right.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agendas.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second by the vice mayor. Any further discussion?
Clarification, what is the motion?
The motion is an approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of April 8, 2021.
Okay, I thought, I thought Mr. Holmes had said agenda.
Did you say agenda? All right. You want to repeat your motion? Thank you, Councilor Dole.
I need to approve the work, the work session and regular meeting as presented.
I second that.
All right. So we have a corrected motion of approving the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of April 8, 2021. And we have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for the budget work session of April 15, 2021. Councilmember Holmes.
I move to approve the work session, I mean, the budget session as presented, what was it, last week? I don't know what the date.
Of April 15.
April 15, thank you.
So there's been a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the budget work session of April 15, 2021. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
The Vice Mayor Robertson has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item on the regular meeting is Item A, a consideration of an ordinance to establish a budget and appropriation for FY 2022, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil Trayer, the city's chief finance officer, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here to finish the FY 2022 budget season. FY 2022 ordinance totals 131,176,865 dollars. It consists of the following: General Fund, 61,753,000; Debt Service, 5,683,000; CIP Fund, 981,000; Blue Ridge Court Services, 1,229,000; Water Fund, 11,615,000; Sewer Fund, 3,960,000; Parking Fund, 514,000; Stormwater Fund, 1,658,000; Environmental Fund, 3,265,000; Education Fund, 35,253,000; Cafeteria Fund, 1,696,000; Textbook Fund, 276,000; School CIP, $100,000; and School State Operated Program, 3,189,000. Five sections of the ordinance, I'd like to point out at this time, Section 1 of the ordinance quantifies the budget of 131,176,865 dollars for fiscal year 2022, which begins on July 1, 2021, and ends on June 30, 2022. Section 2 of the ordinance appropriates 75% of the approved budget. Our budget will remain at 131.2 million, but our initial appropriation request will equal 98,382,649 dollars. This is for, this is the amount that we will be able to legally spend at this time. Our plan is to come back to council no later than February 2022 for a recommendation on the final appropriation. Section 3 establishes a real estate tax rate of 92 cents per $100 of assessed value and downtown service tax of 15 cents per $100 of assessed value. Section 4 establishes property tax at $2.90 per $100 of assessed value and business and machinery at $1.24 per $100 of assessed value. Both taxes remain unchanged from current level. Section 9, we are stating that the annual salary for each council member will remain at the current level. This ordinance was first introduced on March 25, 2021, and a properly advertised public hearing was held on April 8, 2021. Budget work sessions were held on April 1, April 8, April 15, and April 22. This ordinance does include a 3% raise for employees with an effective date of October 1, 2021. And the city manager recommends this budget approval of this ordinance as presented.
Are there any questions for Mr. Trayer? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to adopt an ordinance establishing and approving a budget for the city of Stanton for fiscal year 2022, funds totaling 131,176,865 dollars, and an appropriation of 75% of the approved budget, or 98,382,649 dollars, including an appropriation of a general fund transfer to the education fund totaling 10,219,688 dollars, and fixing other tax rates and fees as proposed, advertised, and considered for public hearings, except for the real estate tax rate, which shall be set at 92 cents per $100 assessed value.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilmember Dole.
I had hoped that we would be able to discuss the possibility of a 93 cent tax rate that would then allow us not only to make the employee's salary increase 3%, but also to allow us to continue curbside recycling. And that doesn't negate that we couldn't start a pilot project with centralized at the same time. And, and so just to make it clear, curbside recycling is a quality-of-life issue, as well as it does help people think about what they need to do to reuse, recycle, reduce, refuse, all of those. And it's unfortunate that no one wants to have a time to test both the new project, and we're gonna lose the, the opportunity of having generations participate in curbside recycling. My other point is, to, to not have any increase in taxes, the tax rate should be set at 88 cents. So anyone that, that wants to pretend like they're low tax and they're, they're, you know, tough on frivolous spending, then they should have made a motion for 88 cents.
Right. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Councilwoman Dole, I mean, I appreciate everything you said, but I believe we also need to realize that if we had set it at 88 cents, we would have had to end trash pickup, everything. I mean, this budget is, basically will allow the city to keep performing the, all the services that it has set out to do with the manner, except that it is trying a pilot program to see how this new plastic recycling can go. And we are allocating a 3% increase in salary for our city employees, and we are backing that up from, originally, the city had said, let's do it on January 1 of 2022. We are backing it up to October 1. So we're kind of splitting the difference. So I still think that this is a good budget, and, you know, I, I wish we could, you know, have a little bit, come to a meeting of the minds, but I still think this is a good, good budget.
Well, this is Carolyn Dole again, and, and the fact is, by not choosing 93 cents, you are eliminating a service that our citizens have relied on, particularly those who are elderly or disabled, or who have young kids and they're working two jobs, but they want to try to do the right thing, they're not going to be able to recycle. But, so by not doing 93 cents, which would have reduced our negative contingency fee, but also allowed us to continue curbside recycling, you are removing that service.
Are there any? Vice Mayor Robertson.
No, and I understand that, Carolyn, but, but in the end, in the end, it is still the citizens' money. It is their hard work and their taxes that they send in, you know, that we have to be stewards of.
And every citizen wants to keep curbside recycling. No one has told me, yeah, get rid of it.
All right. Are there any other comments? I would like to say that the original proposed budget was at 93 cents, but it also included getting rid of the curb-side recycling service and to offer the recycling center. At the 92 cents, the recycling center will still go forth, and the 3% raise will be provided. Now, it is true that 92 cents is still an increase, but we're going from 95 cents to 92 cents in the taxes. Due to the assessments, 88 cents would have made it pretty much level funding as far as the tax rate is concerned. However, we are taking it from 95 to 92 cents to try to provide a relief to our citizens. All right. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is Item B, Blue Ridge Community College Annual Presentation. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to welcome John Downey, President of Blue Ridge Community College, who joins us annually at this time of year to update council and the citizens of the city on the preceding year at Blue Ridge Community College. Dr. Downey?
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here, and I want to thank you for the support each of you provides Blue Ridge Community College. Want to thank the city manager for all the help he provides and the guidance as well. We also get, have a great relationship with Dr. Smith at the Stanton City Schools and do a lot of partnerships with them, and appreciate the work of Billy Vaughn and Amanda De Mayo in your Economic Development Office. I serve on the Shundo Valley Partnership for Economic Development, and we do a lot of things related to workforce development in particular, as you know. One of the most important tasks you have as a board for us is appointing excellent city representatives to the college board. And tonight, we're fortunate to have Ron Ramsey with us. He's actually cycling off the board this June, and I understand you have some great candidates to consider for appointment in his place, but want to thank Ron publicly for the help that he's provided me personally and for the college. And then also Dave Matts has been a great representative of the city as well, so we appreciate both of them and the service they provide as volunteers to Blue Ridge Community College. It's been a challenging year for us, as it's been for all of you as well. Our employees have been resilient and resourceful, and our students have been incredible. We're looking forward to the time when all of us can be together again on campus. Our plan right now is to be in full operations at Blue Ridge Community College for the fall 2021 semester that begins August 23, probably with some restrictions, but hopefully more normal than not. For the past year, we've been operating classes primarily online, with about 15% of career-oriented instruction still in person. In the fall, we hope to get back to more normal rates, as I indicated. The 15% of in-person type programs are programs like aviation maintenance technology, registered nursing, some of the other clinical healthcare programs that we provide, all of the ones that are just difficult to teach any other way but in person. And we've had a few isolated cases on campus, but we've had no widespread spread of the disease, so we're really pleased with the way the faculty implemented our COVID precaution plan. Financially, we would have been very hard-hit by the significant enrollment decline we saw during the pandemic, but the federal support we received from the CARES Act has helped us avoid layoffs and severe cuts. We're hopeful that additional federal funds will sustain us until our enrollment rebounds in the next year. We are optimistic about enrollment. The state government is providing extensive financial aid opportunities for students who wish to pursue in-demand career and technical program opportunities. Those are programs like Mechatronics that serves the needs of the 18% of jobs in the region in the manufacturing sector, all of the healthcare jobs that I mentioned that are so in-demand and pay really well, and also programs like aviation maintenance and automotive technology. Any residents who are within 400% of the poverty rate can essentially get enrolled in those programs and be guaranteed free tuition and fees starting in the fall. I want to thank each of you for your support that we receive, for all the site work we do on campus. We have several pending projects that are important to me and to the college. The most pressing to me is a project to create a campus-wide doorlock system that will increase the safety of the campus. We're also working on an irrigation system for our campus commons, where we hold graduation each year, and we're working on a partnership with Augusta County to improve some of the old sewer lines on campus as well. I've provided you with our annual report that I hope is helpful to you. You can read at your leisure, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but most of all, I just wanted to come in person, and again, thank you for the support you provide us and the students of Blue Ridge Community College.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night. Keep up the good work.
Absolutely. Mr. Ramsey, would you like to say any words? You're good? All right. Thank you for your service. Thank you. All right, the next item is a review of Entrance Corridor Overlay District. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've included this item on your regular meeting agenda this evening at the request of Vice Mayor Robertson, and I'll turn it over to Senior Planner Rodney Rhodes and City Planner Tim Hartless to provide to you an overview of the corridor overlay district.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Once again, thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. It's a pleasure to speak to you this evening about the Entrance Corridor Overlay District. I will start off this presentation, but as I've aged, I've learned to hand off the heavy lifting to the younger and stronger generation, and Tim has been the point person for the corridor overlay districts for about seven years now. First question, and this is gonna be rather basic presentation, general for the public, hopefully it will generate some questions. What is an overlay district? It's a It's a special zoning district with additional standards placed over the underlying zoning. So the underlying zoning could be residential, business, industrial, but this is additional layer of standards for specific areas. And the city has three overlay districts. I think everyone's familiar with the historic preservation overlay. We also have the agriculture-forestry overlay, which was just renewed last year by council for another 10 years. And the subject of tonight is the entrance corridor overlay. And as far as what grants the city the authority to have an entrance corridor overlay is from the Code of Virginia 15.2 that's 2306, which states in part, parcels of land contiguous to arterial streets or highways found by the governing body to be of significant routes of tourist access to the locality or designated historic landmarks, buildings, structures, or districts may be included in a corridor. And then, as far as what is the intent of these overlay districts? And this comes straight from section 18.83 of the Stanton Zoning Code. It's to protect and promote the unique characteristics of the city's natural and built environment leading into the historic districts through assuring site and building design reflecting the natural scenic historic architectural and cultural resources within view of each corridor. One of the goals stated on this section is to promote the general welfare of the community by creating attractive, human-scaled environments, increasing commerce, improving property values, and increasing public awareness of the natural scenic historic architectural and cultural resources near and outside the historic preservation districts. The city has 13 specific corridor districts. They're on this PowerPoint, I will not read them to you. The next slide, oops, is a map showing the location of these 13 entrance corridors. And I think a question that has often come up is, you know, where are they and how deep are they? And as you can tell from this map, it varies significantly. And it's because, as you recall, back when I quoted from this Code of Virginia, is parcels of land contiguous to arterial streets deem significant routes for tourists. So when the corridor overlay was adopted in 2008, the city looked at all the parcels that were contiguous to these routes. So, and some of them are very small, some of them are very large, some overlap with multiple corridors. So that's why you have this vary in size. And of course, some of these parcels have since been subdivided. So that's how you end up with some parcels that do not front on a corridor on one of these corridor highways is actually in an entrance corridor, because when it was adopted in 2008, it was one parcel in contiguous. And just by subdividing the property does not take them out of the entrance corridor. And at this time, I will turn it over to Tim Hartless to go over the general provisions of the entrance corridor overlay district.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hartless.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I, I'd like to start by talking a little bit about our design standards, and then I'll, I'll finish up with some information about the review process. But our design standards come both from our guidelines and from the base ordinance. And there are things that, that we look for when we're reviewing site plans or when we're reviewing building permits for specific properties that are in the corridor. For parking lots, we try to avoid situations where we create these massive seas of parking. If you think about some big box developments like a Lowe's or a Walmart or some of the grocery stores in town, they tend to push the building back towards the back of the parking lot. And then between the street and the building, you have this massive sea of parking. And, and one of the initiatives of the corridors is to try to avoid those situations by encouraging the developer to pull the building up closer to the street, providing some parking in front, and then providing some parking on the sides to, to lessen the visual impact of those, of the massive parking lots. We also encourage shared access points and connections between parking lots. And the purpose for that is to eliminate some of the traffic congestion on the public street, eliminate some of the cars in, cars out, and people on the right lane having to slow down and are come to stop. It tends to, to help with traffic flow. Something else we look at is the, the base zoning code includes a table of parking requirements in 18.25, which is our minimum all-street parking requirements. And that table establishes calculations to be used depending upon the use. Each, each use or group of uses has its own specific calculation. Most of those formulas are based on square footage of buildings or a combination of square footage and number of employees. And in the entrance corridor, the zoning administrator has the discretion to reduce that number of parking spaces in situations where they think it's appropriate. And in a lot of cases, we'll have a situation maybe where it's a retail store. Retail stores are required one space for every 100 square feet of retail area. When we do the calculation, it's, it's likely going to be some large number of 50, 60, 70 parking spaces. Lots of times, the developer will have their own internal models that suggest that all they, all they need might be 30 or 40 parking spaces. So in those situations, it's, it's excessive for us to require those additional spaces when, when the business, based on its own experience, doesn't believe that it needs that parking. So the base ordinance doesn't allow us that flexibility, but the entrance corridor does allow us to have that flexibility to reduce those numbers of required spaces when we think it's appropriate. It also gives us the flexibility to consider on-street parking. The, the base ordinance does not allow us to consider parking spaces on the public street. We can only consider spaces that are on private property, either the property that the business is located or the properties surrounding the business if, if they have a parking agreement that's been recorded at the courthouse. But the corridor gives us the ability to give them a 10% reduction if there are parking spaces on the street within 200 feet of the property. Some cases, the zoning code doesn't require enough parking in the opinion of the developer, and they'll actually provide excess parking, which is above and beyond what the zoning code requires. And in those cases, the corridor requires that excess parking to be constructed of an alternative surface. And the purpose for that is to minimize stormwater runoff, keep that, that stormwater from ending up in the city storm sewers or in a, or in a big detention pond. So in those cases, we require the alternative surface and... I'm going backwards, I think. I don't know how that happened. This photograph is an example of an alternative surface. These are previous pavers. And this is probably the most common type of alternative surface that we see here in Stanton. There are other types of alternative surfaces, which would include previous asphalt, previous concrete. But due to our car sthography, typically we see these permeable pavers where, where the stormwater runoff is allowed to drain in between the pavers and, and down into the soil and eventually find its way into the water table rather than the city storm drains or large detention ponds. For site, going backwards again, for site utilities, we require in the corridor regulations that utilities be buried underground. Most developers have been doing this anyway prior to the corridor, the enactment of the corridor regulations. But we do require, it, it provides security for the utilities from ice and snow and fallen tree limbs, also for potential damage by delivery trucks. We also look at rooftop equipment. We require rooftop equipment to be screened from view. You'll see some examples of that on Richmond Road with the Masaki. Also with the new 7-Eleven, both of those have flat roofs and rooftop equipment, and they've screened it with a, with a screening fence that was installed on the roof. When we look at the building designs, generally we're looking at building materials and roof types. The guidelines contain a, a number of different types of materials that are acceptable in most of the corridors. Those would be things like metal, masonry units such as brick or split-faced block, sometimes ethos, which is an exterior coating that provides protection from the elements and also has some insulation value. And then we look at roof types. Generally in the corridor, we allow gabled roofs, hip roofs, flat roofs with, with parapets. And generally, we try to avoid things like gambled roofs, which, which are barn roofs or shed roofs. For building facades, we try to avoid large blank walls. And we do that by encouraging developers to use architectural features such as windows, sometimes pillars, some kind of variation in, in the surface textures or inset or offsets in this, in the surface, something to give some kind of visual variety and, and avoid situations where you would have these massive blank walls. With our site elements, we try to avoid a massive excavation where someone would come in and just completely level a site. Stanton is a, is a city comprised of a series of hills, and there aren't very many flat sites. So we, we try to encourage developers to terrace their sites, perhaps the building, and some parking is on elevation, and then you step down where there, there would be additional parking to try to avoid these situations where you would flatten out a site and then create this giant massive retaining wall. When we do look at, at site elements such as retaining walls, we try to encourage developers to use materials that are native to the area or materials that reflect some of the architectural elements of the building. Typically, the native materials for our area are limestone, so we see a lot of walls that are limestone or they are some kind of masonry unit that is designed to mimic limestone. Occasionally, if a building has architectural elements such as brick or concrete, you might see a brick retaining wall or maybe a poured concrete or cast concrete retaining wall. Every parcel of land, or, or in this case, every lot, is permitted one freestanding sign. And that freestanding sign has a maximum of 30 square feet, maximum of 15 feet in height, and it, it must be mounted on a base. And that base should be constructed of materials, again, that either reflect elements that are native to our area or reflective of the elements used in the construction of the building. Typically, we see some type of limestone or some type of brick base. But we try to be flexible with the bases. Sometimes they're planters, sometimes, sometimes they're stone, rock. Occasionally we do wood. Generally, these bases, we, we require them to be no more than three feet tall. Generally, you'll see them between two and three feet in height. And those signs also are required to have a five-foot setback from the public right-of-way line. And the purpose for that is to allow some, some space for site distance for vehicles that are pulling out or pulling in from the public street. With building-mounted signs, there, there are no maximum sizes allowed. It's all based on the scale of the wall which the sign is mounted to. So generally, with a sign permit, we would, we would require them to give us a photograph of the building or some type of elevation drawing with a scaled representation of the sign so that we get a feel for what the, what the scale is and whether it's appropriate for the building. Also, building-mounted signs may not cover more than 25% of the windows. Windows are important architectural features, and we try not to, try not to cover them, but still allow some flexibility for business owners to have some window signs. I will mention that we do not allow roof-mounted signs. We never had a lot of roof signs in Stan, but to get the corridor ordinance does not allow for roof-mounted signs any longer. With LED signs, these have become really popular in the last 10 or 15 years. LED message boards, it, prior to that, you would have what we call reader boards, which are plastic boards, usually they're translucent where light can pass through, and, and they would have plastic letters that people would slide in on these tracks to be able to spell out messages. But in the last decade or so, these LED message boards have become much more popular because it's very simple to change the message using a laptop computer. We do have some local regulations on these types of signs. Just like with the old reader boards, we require the, the message not changed more than once a day. We also require the signs to be fitted with a photo cell so that that senses the ambient light. So in the afternoon, when it starts to get dark, the photo cell would sense that and it would start to dim the sign slowly so that at nighttime, the sign is not so bright that it's distracting to motorists. There are also some regulations in the, in the state code that we, that we have to enforce. And this mainly applies to these message boards that are not in the corridor. The state regulations say that the message may not change more than once every four seconds. State regulations also prohibit animation, moving characters, flashing. So those are all things that, that we look at as well. You'll see some of these on some of our corridors that predate the entrance corridor regulations, and those will be changing every four seconds or so. And all of the ones that were approved after the enactment of the, of the entrance corridor regulations will, will stay static for the entire day. These are also generally permitted only in our more commercial corridors like Greenville Avenue, Richmond Road, Commerce Road, and West Beverly. When it comes to illumination for signs, we do allow internally illuminated signs. If it is a cabinet sign, we, we require that the background of that sign be opaque so the light doesn't pass through it. Only the letters and the logos of internally illuminated cabinet signs can, can be illuminated. This next slide has two examples. Of some cabinet signs here in town. Both of these. Were installed without sign permits and you see that they don't they do not meet. That lighting requirement. The one on the left. Has been changed so that the white background no longer lights up, only the red. Logo with the white cursive W lights up. Sign on the right has been turned off. Temporarily while the owner looks at obtaining a permit and looking for. Working with their sign contractor to look for a way to meet that opaque background requirement. This slide, another example of internally illuminated cabinets. Sign on the left is a typical sheet gas station sign where the entire cabinet would light up. Sign on the right is a picture of our sheets on Richmond Road where. They have the red background does not light up and and the white letters for sheets are the only thing that illuminate as well as the gas prices. We also allow externally illuminated signs. For an externally illuminated sign. The lighting must be mounted. Above the sign and shine downward. We we do not allow uplighting of these of these signs when they're externally lit. These fixtures need to be fully shielded. So that they do not reflect onto the public right of way. That's the same reason that we require the down light rather than the up so that we don't have situations where there's light shining on to or reflecting on to the public right of way. This slide contains two examples of externally illuminated signs. The the sign on the left. Has uplighting. And you can see from the photograph that you you can clearly see the two light sources. These types of lightning schemes are subject to. Being hit by lawnmowers, weed eaters. The lights get out of adjustment and before you know it, you have a light that's shining. Into a motorist eyes as they're as they're driving down the road. Sign on the right, that's the. Located on Greenville Avenue and that's an example of a of a properly downlit sign. You can see. How much easier it is to read. And you can see at the bottom of the sign on the ground where the light is not. It's not spreading. It's it's right there on the sign where it's where it needs to be. But it's not lining up other people's properties and it's not reflecting onto the street. Moving on to site lighting. We do require that all fixtures and emit more than eighteen hundred lumens of light be fully shielded. Fixtures must be mounted at a ninety degree angle. You'll see some older developments where they have fixtures. That may be fully shielded, but they have them at a thirty degree or sometimes a forty five degree angle. And it it sounds right in your ass when you're in the parking lot. It's it it completely negates the whole concept of a field of a shielded fixture. And in order to promote some continuity between sites, we also require that all fixtures be either black. Or dark bronze in color. Both for for parking lot lights mounting on poles as well as for building mounted lights. We limit the height of the mounting height to twenty four feet. This is to ensure that the the light doesn't become mounted so high and spread so far that it begins to create glare. Or shadows. As part of a site plan, we would review what's called a photometric plan. Which is where the site plan designer would. Would show calculations of light levels called foot candles at various points along the property. And we require that at the property line. At the boundaries. Those foot candles not exceed half a foot candle. Half a foot candle. Is roughly equivalent to a full moon. With building mounted lighting. We try to limit that to whatever is necessary for safety. We we. We discourage developers from illuminating their facades or outlining the facade with. With 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 tube lights, those rope lights. To try to. Try to keep the the building from becoming a sign. When you when you light up the entire building at night, just like it was daylight. You you end up with a situation where the entire building now becomes advertisement for the businesses within. This slide contains some examples of various types of light fixtures. In the upper left. You have what we call drop lens fixtures. Those are fixtures where the actual light bulb or the light source. Extends down. Below the horizontal plane of the bottom of the fixture. It creates a situation where the light source. Is clearly visible. Which creates glare. It also creates. Shadows in the parking lot. Which make it much easier for someone with ill intentions to find a plot hiding place. The fixtures in the bottom right hand corner are examples of of full cutoff fixtures. Those are fixtures where the light source. Is up inside of of the box where it's fully shielded on the sides and all of the light. Comes straight down towards the ground, has a very narrow spread. Which creates a much better lit site. This slide is a photograph of the new seven eleven at Stanton Crossing. This is an example of. Of a very well lit site. They they're using full cutoff fixtures. Mounted on poles. It's hard to tell from the photograph because it is night, but they are the the building mounted lights are. Also full cutoff fixtures and they are downlights. On the side of the building, there is a there is a sign that's externally lit with down lighting. The gas canopy consists of lighting that is recessed into the ceiling of the canopy. And it creates this. This well lit parking lot, but you can see the edges of the parking lot is where the light stops. It doesn't reflect. Or shine on to the neighboring properties or on to the public street. When we enacted the entrance corridors back in two thousand and eight, we were trying to make sure that we did not. Create an additional review step for developers. So we chose. To incorporate the entrance corridor review into our existing site plan and building permit reviews. Some localities that have entrance corridor overlays will create an architecture review board. And it it creates a whole nother layer of of review process. And in this cases, it slows down the review process and and we were not wanting to do that. That's why we we established this process where staff. Reviews. Applications for changes in the corridor as part of our existing site plan. Review process. If it's a situation where a site plan is not required. Then we do this review during the building permit process or during a trade permit process. Occasionally, we have a situation where something. Needs to go through a corridor review. But there's no building permit required, no site plan required. In those cases, we usually do the review by email. They will email me. Some type of proposal. I will respond back to them with an email so they have an approval from us in writing. Before they move forward. The whole process is designed to be a negotiation between staff and the developer. In situations where staff and the developer cannot reach an agreement. There is a provision that that then. Requires the proposal to go to the planning commission for review. And then when the planning commission makes a decision. If the applicant feels aggrieved. Doesn't agree with planning commission's decision, they have the right to appeal that decision to city council. Once city council takes action. They again have the right, if they choose. That they still feel aggrieved, they can appeal that action to the circuit court. In the. Nearly thirteen years since we've enacted the corridors. We have not had a situation where anyone has ever appealed a decision to the circuit court. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Rose now, who's going to talk a little bit about the amendment process. And perhaps some future updates to our guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Hartless. I I wouldn't add to Tim's presentation regarding the review of a project that's in the entrance corridor. I think there's been some questions, well, it takes longer. It it doesn't necessarily take longer if we have a complete application. At either the site plan process or the building permit process. I I know Tim often when he's reviewing a site plan or building permit application that's in the quarter. It's like, well, they didn't provide color elevations of the building. They didn't show the details. You know, of the dumpster enclosure or or specifics on the lighting. So if that's all included with the original application. It's done concurrently, so there is no additional review time necessary. As far as the amendment process. It's the same process with any zoning text amendments in the ordinance. It would go through the public review process, through the plan commission, and then ultimately to city council. As far as who can initiate that process, it's either the city council, governing body, the plan commission. Or an applicant, a citizen can petition either commission or city council to to initiate this review. In my four years here, I think we've had one applicant. That started that process. However, he withdrew the application just before the. The scheduled planning commission public hearing, I believe. As far as updating. The entrance corridor overlay. I'm happy to to note that there is funding available in the current fiscal year budget. To hire consultants. Staff had requested this for. Two, three years and this past year. It was a part of the adopted budget by city council. However, as we know with COVID. Those funds were not although in the budget, they did not become available until I think councils a budget amendment number four this past. Winter. So the money is there set aside for it. Right now, staff is in the process of drafting a request for proposals. We'll send that out. To consultants. We will select a consultant and then the consultant will. Draft these revisions with input from staff and also envision that there'd be at least a couple. Public input sessions where the consultant could get some feedback from businesses and from citizens. And then, of course, it would have to go through the public hearing process, planning commission, city council, and ultimately it'd be up to council whether to adopt. These guidelines. And that concludes our presentation. Mr. Hartless and I'll be glad to take any questions you have.
All right. Well done. Thank you. Are there any questions by council members? Council member Clappy.
And gentlemen, what what part of these regulations seem to cause the most complaints from property owners?
I think most of the complaints we get are regarding the sign restrictions. Actually, I get very few complaints come directly to me. I hear them from Tim and also hear them from my director. So I'll let Tim add anything he'd like to add that.
Complaints generally come to either me or to the zoning inspector. And I would say the the most common. Complaint from a developer or from a property owner. Would be with signs and and about typically it's about sign lighting of some sort. We we don't get very many complaints about size or height typically has to do with the illumination.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I I just want to personally thank Rodney and and Tim for putting the putting this together. I mean, it gives us a kind of an idea what's going on. How changes can be made and who can institute them and I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
This is Vice Mayor Robertson. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for this detailed presentation. It certainly was appreciated. All right. The next item on the agenda is matters from the city manager. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, I don't have anything for council this evening.
Right, next is matters from the public. I am going to take a moment just to read matters from the pole. From the public or rules, if you will. Matters from the public. This part of the city council's agenda is entitled matters from the public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. Number one, please come to the podium, identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you have reached the five minute time, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium. If you continue to speak after I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit. I will ask you again to please stop speaking and step away from the podium. If you still continue to speak, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section eighteen point two dash four one five A two. Number two. This is a time for us as councils, as city council members, simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give and take debate. If you seek information, you may mention it during your remarks and the city manager or or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. Number three. We ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to identify employees of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, email or mail. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Number four. We expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. Using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their duties on behalf. Of the city of Stanton and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Number five. Finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules. I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond. So we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our interim clerk of council, Ms. Smith. And now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public. Anyone caring to speak, please approach the podium. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Joanne Tiger. I live at nine thirteen North Augusta Street. Pardon me. I wanna talk about the curbside recycling. Ending. In, I believe, January, I was sent. Potential bill for property tax at the ninety five cents. Per hundred dollar. Value. And we've spent the last few months preparing for that. On. You know, limited budget. The last few months, we've been setting aside, preparing for that. Now funding added slower, that's that's good, but. Now funding added is lowered, that's good, but do, first of all, I want to go back, do any of you all remember a few years back when there was talk of the Gypsy Hill Golf Course being closed? Anybody remember that? Wasn't too many years ago. It was going to be closed because it wasn't well-used. Nobody was using it, so it was just going to be closed. All of a sudden, we're spending two hundred grand on golf carts. Doesn't make sense to me. But anyhow. No recycling? Is that what I'm hearing? No recycling coming up? It's bad enough, we're not recycling plastics, but now no recycling? Does anybody have grandchildren on council? I have grandchildren. I'm thinking about the future. I like this guy who's getting his doctorate in plastic something, and I'm taking my twos and fives down near the refill station so he can make furniture out of twos and fives, so I'm saving my twos and fives. We've got to think about the future. We may be dead in ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, but we've got our future to think about. We've got our heritage, our grandchildren, our future to think about. We can't just think about what's in our lives. We've got to think about our heritage. We've got to think about our future. This is not really good decision-making to think that we are it, because we are hopefully not it. We have got our future to think about. Recycling is important. Golf carts? If we were to get rid of the whole Gypsy Hill Golf Course a few years ago? I don't know. But recycling is definitely something that we need to think about. That's just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Next.
Good evening, Christine Holly, President of the State and Education Association. City budgets are a reflection of city priorities. It is disappointing that fully funding the school budget is not a priority at this time, even when only level funding from last year was asked. The terminology of meeting the school division halfway is misleading. Whether the amount is four hundred forty-four thousand or two hundred twenty-two thousand, the city has cut the school budget. The city also eliminated approximately eight hundred eighty thousand from a fifty-fifty handshake agreement that has been in place for decades. The good news is that the American Rescue Plan Act funding is coming to the city soon. Please ensure that full funding of schools is prioritized when this funding becomes available. We are counting on you to do the right thing for our students, families, and staff. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Bowden. I live at 232 East Beverly Street and own properties throughout Stanton, including commercial property in downtown area. In the last five years, golf courses have been closing at an alarming rate and an increasing rate. According to industry reporting during the last several years, a hundred and eighty to two hundred and five golf courses have closed each year. Our council has decided not to use funds put aside to do a professional golf course analysis. Instead, an ad hoc committee was formed, appointed by the council, consisting of golf fans and friends of the council, including the golf pro. In the years 2017 to 2019, the golf pro earned an additional thirty-five thousand dollars from tournaments, which was more than the city netted from those tournaments. The council has not reviewed nor released any financials for the operation of the golf course to justify the purchase of two hundred thousand dollars worth of brand-new golf courts, carts, nor do they have any proposed budget for its continuing operation. Tonight, the new majority refused to raise real estate taxes by one cent to reduce the proposed three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars negative contingency in their approved budget, but refused to even reduce the number of the fifty new golf courts, carts, tripling the amount of golf carts we'll have. Whether golf enthusiasts and our council are willing to face it or not, the fact is that golf courses are going the way of shopping malls and blockbuster video. From a high of a hundred and eight members several years ago, currently there are six paying members of the golf, of the Gypsy Hill Golf Course. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, I'm Fritz Fairfield. I live on Thorn Rose Avenue. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, thank you very much. I have three things. Number one is I like the funding for the Gypsy Hill Golf Course. I live near there, and no, I don't play golf yet. But there are many Stantonians that don't skateboard. They don't play tennis. They don't go to concerts. They don't go to the duck ponds. They don't go swimming. They don't go fishing. They don't go to school. They don't go to ball fields. But these are things that are luckily available in our beautiful city for those that want to use them. Number two, I think our school system has done a nice job with the best interest of our students in their mind. Distributing money is difficult. But you can see if you drive on North Coulter Street that the school board made their decision on the importance of funds. Stretching budgets now may be a result of prior decisions. And number three, I would like to thank our city manager, Mr. Rosenberg, and all of his staff. They seem to be the ones that are the heartbeat of preparation of pulling things together for these meetings. Your patience and your explanations help me, the average citizen, understand the circus that happens here on some days. Even costumes with scripts and chants don't rattle your patience and your resolve as you serve our council in their work for this queen city. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Next.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm Ms. Crawford, and I'm a citizen of the Stanton City. Tonight I bring forward to you campaign goals or campaign rhetoric. The matter I present to you tonight is the right for all Stanton citizens to have the right to let you know their concerns at council meetings. You asked us right in your majority vote on April 8, 2021, to end rights, to call in comments to the city hearings and meetings. As you are keenly aware, you represent all citizens of Stanton. You have the responsibility to ensure that all citizens have full participation in their local government. As you sit physical distance in your seats and have a panoramic view of the chamber you are currently sitting in, you see limited numbers of seats that can accommodate citizens to come before council to speak their matters. I ask you tonight, are your campaign goals you committed in 2020 campaign goals or campaign rhetoric? Ms. Darby, on May 21, 2020, your statement to the news leader, I quote, "The biggest goal is just to listen to our citizens and be a voice for them." How can you listen to us if we're not here for you to hear us? Mr. Clappy, May 21, 2020, your statement to the news leader, and I quote, "I was tired of seeing the six-to-one vote and not even having the opportunity to discuss matters and leaving a lot of citizens feeling like they weren't being heard." So shutting us out, what do you think that did? Mayor Oats, on May 21, 2020, your statement to the news leader, and I quote, "I would really like to be able to have a platform which citizens are heard." Again, how can we be heard if you shut us out? Vice Mayor Robertson, in your March 26, 2020 campaign video, I quote, "We have to think innovatively. If something is not working, let's find a solution. No more doing things the same way just because we've always done it that way." I ask you tonight, were your campaign 2020 goals for citizens including and innovative government solutions campaign goals or campaign rhetoric? I strongly implore you to reinstate citizen call-ins and citizen hearings at all meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will ask that the citizens please address the council as a whole. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Ann Hunter. I live at North Brayburn Place in Stanton. So one of the positive things about wearing masks is that we have an opportunity to express our creativity through our masks and what matters to us. So you probably can't see this very well, but it's a picture of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, or at least half of her face, and a famous quote of hers. Fight for the things you care about. I care about a lot of things, and I'm going to comment on two of them tonight. Two things that I deeply care about. The first one is local democracy. And the critical question for us is, what kind of local democracy do we want? An oligarchic democracy? Or a popular democracy? An oligarchic democracy is a government run by a few for the benefit of a few, and where dissenting voices are suppressed. A popular democracy is a government that works for the people, for the majority, with open and responsive governance, where citizen input and the decisions that impact them is openly solicited and the barriers to equitable engagement are removed. The equal opportunity for each Stanton resident, regardless of their personal circumstances, to comment during public hearings and to hear the comments of other residents is a democracy issue. It's not a partisan issue, as some assume. And as such, it speaks to the heart of my opening question. What kind of local democracy do we want to be? My vote is for a popular democracy, one in which all Stanton citizens have an equal opportunity to weigh in on the issues that affect them, including the issue of telephone participation in city council meetings. If you agree that a popular democracy serves our city better than an oligarchic democracy, this is the time to reconsider the vote to end call-in citizen engagement in city council meetings. A second thing that I care deeply about. Last Thursday, a group of concerned citizens took turns reading a statement of our collective response to the majority vote to end telephone participation in public hearings and matters from the public. The first person to speak at the end of the meeting was a black woman. She walked into a space filled with white people. And at the end of the meeting, she rose to speak with power and conviction. Just imagine the courage and fortitude that it took for her to do that in a totally white space, carrying with her centuries of oppression as a black woman. Five of you stayed. Thank you for that. Two of you left. I am deeply disturbed by your behavior and recommend that you do some serious soul-searching that will lead you to make better decisions in the future. And that will acknowledge the inherent dignity and value and worth.
Ms. Hunter, what time is it?
I'm finished.
No, okay, great, thank you. All right, next speaker.
My name is Jennifer Trupier. I live at Frontier Ridge Court here in Stanton. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Your duties are complex and diverse. You have oversight over the ways and means of how our city is run, from budget to policy. The complexity and demands placed upon you for your four-year term are immense, and I applaud your willingness to serve in this capacity. No one that I know of likes to hear negative feedback about their performance. And yet, it can be vitally important in making any of us aware of how our positions on things, how our actions are reflected to others. Sometimes, we perceive our choices in a manner that are a hundred and eighty degrees different than how they are seen by others. In your 2020 campaigns to run for the offices you now hold, we, the electors, heard promises of hearing from public, especially from those who felt unheard, silenced, that you wanted to be a voice for the citizenry, that you wanted to find solutions for things not working well, to be innovative. But then last week on Facebook, where any member of your constituency could read, one of you wrote that the constant negative views and personal attacks of a vocal few restrict meaningful communication. I felt it is imperative to remind you that dialogue with those whom you serve is key to success in your work. Building relationships with fellow citizens is vital. Anyone in leadership will hear negative feedback. How you respond is key. Listen to the concerns. They might have perspectives you've not yet considered. Be respectful to them, and you'll likely be given respect in return. Provide opportunities for open exchanges over topics that have concern for your citizens. It's good to think outside the box. Be innovative. Be innovative. We want to work with you, not against you. It is vital that you reconsider call-ins for matters from the public. Not only do we know that you are exposed to our thoughts, but our neighbors as well. As a person with accessibility issues, requiring me to be present in these chambers is a hardship, and I am not alone. There are many health and social issues that prevent people from being present here. You've heard mention of some. Work with us. Listen to us. Reconsider your vote on April eighth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Stephen Maxwell. I live at eight thirteen Churchville Avenue in the city. Today's Earth Day. I was a first year at UVA, the very first or second Earth Day when it was celebrated. Environmental issues have been on the top of my agenda ever since. And what a contrast. I spent the morning, or portion of the morning today, with other volunteers from Shenandoah Green planting sixty-six trees on a property in the city, just a little bit trying to improve the environment. And then here tonight, I hear the council take a vote on your budget where you're eliminating curbside recycling. It's a serious step backwards. It's a it's not a good decision, and I urge you to reconsider the budget and come up with some way of putting curbside recycling back in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Sally Berger. I live at one sixteen North Madison Street. Been there thirty-four years today. Same house. Love it. Lucky I bought when I did. While it's not my main topic that I wanted to talk about tonight, I do I come from a long line of teachers. I'm not a teacher myself, but I come from a long line of teachers. And I really find it just unbelievable that our school board request for funds is not being fully met. However, we're having the golf carts funded. That's crazy. So anyway, I'd like to primarily address council eliminating the option for citizens to phone into meetings, and you're making physical attendance mandatory for council members. I'd really hoped that the call-in issue would have been revisited tonight, and the council would have reconsidered the decision to limit public discourse. I emailed members of council yesterday and asked that this be done. I also asked that each council member acknowledge receipt and reading of my email. To date, as of five P M., I've received acknowledgement from four of seven on council, Mayor Oaks and councilperson's doll, Holmes, and Mead. Mayor Oaks acknowledged my email and my concerns by telling me I had been heard and that my request would be taken into consideration. I felt this was sincere and that perhaps she would bring this matter back up for a revote. But now I'm extremely disappointed as I feel my sentiments were simply set aside without due consideration. Your treatment of the public has a bearing on everything you do. If you stand by your decision to limit rather than to encourage public discourse, you send the message that you'll carry out the city's business only as you see fit, rather than as a product of input from all of Stanton's residents. This seems at odds with ideals of a democratic republic. But as I understand the Supreme Court's doctrine of time, place, and manner of restrictions on speech, a government entity must ensure that the imposed restriction is, quote, narrowly tailored to serve a significant governmental interest. I'd like to know what council deems to be the significant governmental interest here as relates to elimination of citizens' ability to phone in to meetings. And I'd specifically like to receive an answer in writing to this question, either from council or council's attorney, as I cannot think of a significant governmental interest that would apply here, such as if calling in created a clear and present danger of some sort or other such compelling reason. Suppression of speech, even if legal in some limited circumstances, is still wrong if implemented when not absolutely essential. I touched base with three other Virginia localities and learned that Harrisonburg, Charlottesville, and Richmond city councils are all holding meetings entirely virtually, and the public in all three jurisdictions continue to call in to meetings. This is in contrast to Stanton City Council requiring all members to attend in person. And if citizens desire to address council during meetings, we also are required to physically attend. This is regressive, repressive, irresponsible, dangerous, and completely unnecessary, especially in an ongoing, highly contagious pandemic when the city has just recently paid for the installation of technology that would keep everyone safe. It should go without saying, the council members should start showing that they take this virus seriously, as recently advised by Dr. Cornaggy, instead of inexplicably acting contrary to her advice. If you eliminated call-ins due to concerns about the length of meetings, perhaps shortening the allowed public speaking time from five to three minutes could prove helpful. This would be one alternative, alternative reasonable solution, and perhaps consultation with other city councils could shed some light on other reasonable remedies for your concerns, certainly remedies other than silencing citizens' voices. Stanton is the only city I know of that is doing that in this day and age, and it's wrong.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. I would ask if the citizens could please address the council as a whole. Any further speakers?
Yes. Hi, my name is David Verdy. I live at one twenty-five College Circle. First off, Happy Earth Day. It's very fitting. My comment this evening is over the possible elimination or reduction of the city's recycling program. Having a clear understanding of the fiscal burden curbside and other recycling programs have on small cities, the fact the city is not aggressively seeking bold alternatives shows Stanton's leadership lacks in innovative ideas to invest in future-proofing our city. Without turning this into an assentant rant about American wastefulness, the solution to recycling programs is not finding ways to make them work, but to find ways to make them obsolete, or at least significantly reducing the volume of recyclables produced to begin with. With that said, I want to offer some ideas that other cities around the country have implemented that our city could pilot if our leadership would make the effort and investment. First, outreach and education is essential. Not all plastic is recyclable, however, not everyone is aware of this. A recycling program cannot work efficiently if unauthorized materials get into the system. Well-developed video campaigns that promote and educate residents of how to properly recycle could be commissioned. Economic recruitment and development can also benefit from such campaigns by having these initiatives in the public domain that potential investors, businesses, and even visitors will find compelling. Additional outreach can take place in areas of schools, local businesses, business, worship, or even on the street by more traditional means like posters, billboards, or, for example, outreach and attendance staffed by volunteers on Beverly Street that's conveniently closed on the weekends. You can then invest it in targeted P R. to draw on state and national press to tout your efforts and build local pride. Recycling takes citizen participation. Education is needed for it to work correctly. There are many programs and city-initiated bans that could easily be copied and piloted in Stanton to, again, help reduce the volume of waste to begin with. Stanton could ban single-use plastic bags, add tax for plastic bags used at checkout. Numerous cities around the country have put such bans in place with great success. From personal experience on a recent trip to Wales, being offered a grocery bag at checkout was always by request, never the given, and often random bags clearly on their second, third use. Plastic straws could be banned. A video from CBS Sunday Morning documents one city straw ban initiative. If you need something more comical, the Daily Show piece that shows how Washington, D.C. is building compliance with their straw ban by constant outreach engagement and rewarding those who follow the program's guidelines. The city could find innovative ways to reduce volumes of single-use plastic bottles being sold. Local gas stations and convenience stores could be encouraged to use more refillable containers so they can use fountain drinks, as well as banning single-use plastic coffee cups. And starting installing water fountain stations throughout the city, both in neighborhoods and high-traffic areas where residents and visitors can refill reusable containers with free, safe, clean drinking water could encourage fewer bottled water purchases. Paris notably has one of the best examples of this kind of program that is scalable to a city like Stanton. Area breweries and bars could test out using returnable beer bottles that is common in several European countries, and several U.S. cities have also begun using them. Stanton is fortunate enough to have a very supportive independent restaurant and food industry, and reusable-to-go container programs could be very approachable. Go Box is a company that offers a fairly turnkey approach to pilot such programs. Cities like Portland, Oregon, Newport, Rhode Island, Brooklyn have piloted these programs. Although not a city, Virginia Tech with roughly thirty thousand students has a successful reusable-to-go container program. They'd likely happily invite you to speak about it and how it works. Lastly, another tool for building awareness and encouraging proactive recycling would be to install public recycling receptacles alongside public street trashcans. As far as I know, we don't have any. If there are, very few. I want to end with this. Prior to living in Stanton, I was working in Christiansburg, where I co-founded Downtown Christiansburg, Inc., or D C I. It's Christiansburg's equivalent of the S D D A. During our early stages, we researched and reached out to several organizations whose influence in their city was something we wished to model. The Stanton Downtown Development Association was one of several organizations we reached out to to pick their brain. As our organization grew, we collaborated with other similar organizations. Downtown Stanton was often mentioned as a model of what they hope to do in their own community. I'm sharing this because the decision the city government makes, not just for the downtown area or historical districts, but the city as a whole, could be one that other municipalities look to as a model for their own efforts of bold, lasting, equitable actions to make their community a better release now and in the future. We first need our leadership to think outside the box and make the investment regardless of the R O I. I'll be sending a copy of this, the statement, to everyone via email so you can reread it and give you any mentioned citations if you choose to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, I would like to state, just for the record, the recycling center program that we will have will be a pilot program. Also, your city council has heard you concerning calling in, and we will be reviewing that issue when we review the council's procedures. Right, with that, this meeting is now adjourned.